Good evening. Before we get started tonight, we have a couple of special introductions, so.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. I'm filling in for Chief Lindsay this evening. It is my privilege to introduce two new officers that just started with us last week. So first, it's my privilege to introduce Caroline Sensman. Caroline graduated from the University of Dayton in May of 2022 with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. With an interest in law enforcement, she interned with the United States Marshal Service and the Dayton Police Department. Both internships furthered her passion to pursue a criminal justice career. She graduated from the Green County Career Center Criminal Justice Academy in February 2025, earning her OPADA Basic Peace Officer Certification. Caroline previously worked at the Springmead Health Center in Tip City. With her commitment to a career in law enforcement and dedication to public service, Caroline chose to work for Beaver Creek not only because of our agency's prestige, community-oriented policing mission and supportive community, but also for the opportunities available to our officers to grow within the agency. Welcome Caroline. Next, it's my privilege to introduce Matthew Lammer, who joins us as a second-generation officer, following in the footsteps of his father, Tim, who has been with the department for some 26 years. Matthew is a 2024 graduate of Eastern Kentucky University with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. He graduated from the Green County Career Center and Criminal, I'm sorry, Criminal Justice Academy in February 2025 as well, earning his OPADA Basic Peace Officer Certification. While attending EKU, Matthew worked as a Parking Security Enforcement Officer for the EKU Parking and Transportation Department. He is currently serving as a Second Lieutenant with the Kentucky Army and National Guard as well. Matthew has always been committed to pursuing a career in law enforcement and is dedicated to serving the public, not only as a police officer, but also as a member of the National Guard. He has chosen to fulfill that dedication to Beaver Creek because of our agency's professionalism, reputation, community support, and the many opportunities afforded to our officers. Welcome Matthew. Thank you very much.
Welcome. It's always nice to see new police officers join us, so. Call this meeting door or roll call please.
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Councilmember Doer.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Littrell.
Here.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bales.
Here.
Mayor Adams.
Here.
And I'll turn the meeting over to Vice Mayor Bales.
All right, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We could stay standing for a brief prayer. We gather this evening as servants and neighbors, grateful for the privilege to represent the people of Beaver Creek, a community we ourselves call home. Grant us wisdom and humility as we make decisions that affect not only those we serve, but also our own families, friends, and futures. Help us and all in attendance to listen with respect, speak with kindness, and act with integrity. May our work be guided by fairness, compassion, and a shared commitment to the greater good of this community that we all cherish. Amen.
We have an agenda before us. Any changes, additions, corrections?
We approve the agenda, Your Honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And then we have a couple of sets of minutes, March 10th, regular meeting minutes. Any additions, changes, corrections?
Move to approve the March 10th meeting minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the March 10th meeting minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Aye. Sorry. Forgot about that.
And then we have the March 17th work session minutes. Changes, additions, corrections?
Motion to approve the March 17th work session minutes.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the work session minutes for March 17th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
Very good. First up, public hearing.
Case number PUD 25-1, an application filed by Miranda Holmes, 4710 Interstate Drive, Suite T, Cincinnati, Ohio. The application requests approval to rezone 25.195 acres from R-1A, One Family Residential District, and A-1 Agricultural District to R-PUD Residential Planned Unit Development. The property is located at 4040 Graham Drive, further described as Book 1, Page 6, Parcel 9, on the Green County Property Tax Atlas. Ordinance number 25-2, an ordinance rezoning 25.195 acres from A-1 Agriculture, further described as Book 1, Page 6, Parcel 9, on the property tax maps of Green County, Ohio, to R-PUD 25-1 Residential Planned Unit Development, PUD 25-1.
Is the applicant present? Please come forward, state your name and your address, please.
My name is Brian Hozel, 4710 Interstate Drive, Cincinnati, Ohio. Stop button.
Oh, I didn't have PUD.
Oh.
You got it.
I do, yeah.
There's one if you drive.
All right.
One second.
No problem. And it's just right, right is next, and next.
Did I drive into the car?
I did, yeah, yeah. Office is in Westchester, so I kind of use that as a halfway point. I actually live in Kentucky.
Oh.
Yeah, it's all right. If I just talk the whole time, you guys will be bored out of your minds. The PowerPoint helps, helps the visuals. My name is Brian Hozel, I'm the Land Acquisition Manager from Miranda Holmes. So my territory covers Northern Kentucky, Cincinnati, all the way up to Dayton. Miranda as a company is a family-owned company based out of Pennsylvania, but our office for this region is in Westchester. A lot of you might not be familiar with us. We build, we have built more in Cincinnati, but we're expanding up into Dayton. So our current closest communities would be Springboro, right in the corner of Redline Five Point and 73, Liberty Township, neighborhood called Carriage Meadows, and then we just opened one in Lebanon on Green Tree Road. We also have sites coming this summer in Huber Heights and Troy as well. Those are both large developments. So right there is the site that we're discussing today. As you can see, there are, and you'll see on the map itself, we're making two connections to, first one to Bayview to the north and Graham Drive to the east, and then there will also be Stub Streets for potential future development. Also, as you can see, the both to the north and to the east are residential communities, and then obviously to the south, there are some larger, single-family residences on a larger property, which is what this property is. So this property is currently zoned R1 Agricultural. It's a single-family residence. As I said before, the site is bordered by residential to the north and to the east. This is a screenshot on the right from the land use plan, calling for residential under three units per acre. Is there a way to change the formatting of this? It's kind of cutting off the, that's right, that's right. We're requesting a max density of 2.25 per acre, which is under what the land use plan calls for. Here is the layout as it's been submitted. So it is 55 single-family detached lots. There is a 50-foot buffer along the northern, and then obviously only one lot up there in the northeast. So a 50-foot buffer next to any existing residential homes. And then obviously, the bottom right-hand corner will be open space. You see a kind of an odd long driveway and a long lot. That's an existing cell phone tower. When we close on the land, that'll actually be parceled off. The owner would like to retain that tower and the tower lease. I've been in contact with the cell phone tower company, that we would provide a better access easement to access that cell tower, and that's something that we would install. It would give them better access and just look nicer than the gravel road that's currently there. Another thing to note here is the location of stormwater facilities. We are obviously required to maintain any stormwater on the site, so those facilities will manage that and disperse it in a controlled manner. We're also avoiding the stream, very small streams that are on the site, to try to allow those to flow where they're currently flowing. So the process that we go through during the due diligence process after zoning, so obviously provide access to that cell phone tower, as I discussed, we've already worked with Green County on sewer and water connections. There, I know there is a pump station to the north on Bayview Drive. We've discussed removing that because we would be making that connection to Bayview Drive and allowing that to flow into the gravity sewer, which is what we would be doing with this site, is connecting to gravity sewer. Finally, if a traffic impact study is triggered according to the ODOT, we would perform that traffic study. One thing I'd like to note is that we plan on building both one and two-story homes, so we would have kind of two different demographics. We'd be serving here with the 55 homes, one story mainly being people who are looking to downsize, and then two-story being families. The reason I bring that up in the context of the traffic impact is that those tend to generate traffic at different times. So if hypothetically, half the site is ranch and half is two-story, those two age groups tend to be on the road at different times, which when you do a traffic impact study, would actually produce a lower traffic flow because they are different peaks, traffic time for those two demographics. This is a list of plans that we would plan to build here. So the smallest home would be an Avalon Ranch, as well as two other ranch homes. Avalon Ranch is just under 1,500 square feet. And then for two-story homes, the smallest one would be the Dallas, just under 1,900 square feet. And we'd go all the way up to, with sunrooms and additions, you can add to the homes close to 3,000 square feet. I would expect the average home size to be probably 2,200 to 2,300 square feet. All these homes are three-bedroom, two-bath minimum, with two-car garage, similar to the home shown in that picture, which is the Carlyle, the largest home that we would build in the community. Another thing to note is that all homes would include cement fiberboard siding on all of them, so there'd be no vinyl siding, and we would likely include partial brick or partial stone on the front of the home as well, just because it makes for a nicer-looking home. I know this is beyond what we're here to discuss today, zoning, but because a lot of you might not be familiar with Miranda Homes, I'll kind of explain what we do standard in our homes. So all of our homes come standard with nine-foot ceilings on the first floor, and that whole list of options there, all the way from 42-inch cabinets, granite quartz countertops. We like to call the homes semi-custom, so we have a set list of homes that we build, but every single home of the list of nine or 10 that I showed you has like four or 500 different options that you can take. You can do sunrooms, you can put a third-car garage, you can change a loft to a bedroom, there's a chef's kitchen, there's a deluxe master bath, there's hundreds of options for every single home. So we are a, we don't spec build the homes, we build them for the customer. So when the customer comes in, they actually pick which lot they want, they pick which home they want, and then they work with the sales agent to actually build the home. So it's not custom because it's a set number of options, but the community ends up looking not cookie cutter, because when you offer 10 homes in a 55-home community, and there's all kinds of different brick and stones and structural options, it ends up looking like a community of unique homes, not just the same home over and over. Just so you understand what the price comparison is in the neighboring community, so to the north, over the last two years, in the red box, the average sale price was 265.8, and then the green box to the east, the homes in that box were 226.800, that's sales over the last two years. We would project our average sale price, and it's cut off there, to be between 450 and 500. I would guess probably close to 500,000 as the average sale price. It just depends on if people are going for the smaller homes or the larger homes. Here's an example of the ranch homes that we've been building on the site. The top two are different Avalon setups, and then the bottom left is the 2,000-square-foot Miramar, and the bottom right is the 1,700-square-foot Sanibel. Here are the examples of the two-story homes that we've built, and these are homes that we've built in the Cincinnati region. So let's see, all of those homes are between 2,000 and 3,000 square feet, all of them would be four-bed, two-and-a-half-bath as well. So as I've said before, I do these zoning hearings in, you know, 10 counties. I've probably done these in 20 different municipalities, and I tend to hear the same thing from the public in all of them, which is, we don't want homes in this site, we want this site to remain as it is, but everybody recognizes that we do need more homes in this region, in this country, just to increase the supply. So I'm here tonight asking for this site to be developed residential because it's uniquely situated for residential development. So it's not a great location for commercial, just because it's at the end of a residential community. It's very unlikely it would go for a commercial development for that reason. It has sanitary sewer on site, has water on site. The comprehensive plan calls for it to be residential, single-family detached, so we feel that we're consistent with the plan. So I would just ask that you consider all those factors, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them now, and also happy to answer any questions after public comment.
Thank you very much. We'll probably have some questions for you after the public comments.
Thank you.
Staff.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. Again, the case you have before you is PUD 25-1. Again, the applicant's requesting to rezone about 25 acres from mainly A1, but a small portion is R1A2, a new R-PUD, to construct 55 new single-family homes on that lot. Just to quickly go over the process, the PUD process is two steps. Phase one is the rezoning process, and I've kind of highlighted in the red box here where we are this evening. It's the first city council meeting and public hearing, and where we go over the specific uses allowed, the setbacks, any buffers, and any density requirements. And then, should the PUD rezoning be approved, then the next stage would be go through the specific site plan stage. And that's where we really talk about the design of the site in terms of the site plan, the stormwater detention, any of the specifics on the architectural elevations, layouts, landscaping, and screening. But this evening, I know that the plans you've got in your packet are more detailed than we would normally see at the rezoning phase, so I just kind of wanted to point out that there's two separate phases in this, but their plans kind of look like it's we're on phase two, but we're not, we're still on phase one. And just to point out to anybody watching or listening, as part of that phase two, same notification would go out, the mailings would go out to everybody within 500 feet because of the public hearing at the Planning Commission, and the public hearing at the city council of the second phase as well. So the property's located in northwestern Beaver Creek. It kind of, this is kind of the 30,000-foot view. As you get closer, you can see it is, the 25 acres is south and west of two existing neighborhoods. The parcel itself is about 1,580 feet wide, about 750 feet deep, sits off of Kemp Road, about 1,875 feet, and close to 1,300 feet from 675 right away. And this again, this is just a little bit closer, and you can see the Stub Street to the north and the Stub Street to the east, single-family residential to the north and the east. There is several outbuildings and a house on the existing 25-acre property. And then there's some farm property to the south. Now, this is just another shot from an angle, just to show how this property relates to the single-family residential neighborhoods to the north and to the east. In terms of the zoning, again, it's technically on the zoning map, it's multiple zoning designations, but you can see on this map here, it can show in green is the portion that's A1 Agricultural, and in the far northeast corner, there's about 20,000-square-foot area that is zoned R1A Single Family Residential. As the applicant stated, this, on the land use plan, this is designated as low-density residential, which allows up to three dwelling units an acre per the text of the land use plan. It's also located within VPA 19, and one of the caveats in VPA 19 is, VPA 19 in general states that any major or large-scale development should have access on the Kemp Road. Now, we felt that this is 25 acres of 175-acre VPA, 14% of the VPA. It's got that significant distance from both Kemp and from 675. So given that it has access, or future access points into the existing neighborhood, we just didn't feel with this particular development, any improvements or upgrades on Kemp Road is warranted with this particular development. So given such, we were, staff and planning commission both agree that this proposal is compatible with the land use plan as they presented. Scene here is the site plan. The applicant did a good job going over that, and I don't want to duplicate their efforts. So you can see the buffer to the north and the stormwater detention ponds to the south. Now, I just want to point out, this is a concept plan and only, so there may be some shifting of lots and roads and things like that as we get to the specific site plan stage, which normally in a rezoning stage, you wouldn't get any of the lots drawn out, you wouldn't get, you would just show future access points and that's in any potential buffers. So I just want to point that out. There is that cell phone tower on the site, and applicant stated that their intent is to have it remain there and be under separate ownership by the existing owner. A little bit over the proposed zoning change, again, from R1A and A1 to R-PUD, within the ordinance attached within your packet, shows the uses, should be those allowed in an R1A district, which is the same district that you have to the north and the east, so you can have single-family homes, places of religious assembly, nursing, nursery or daycare centers or assisted living facilities. The ordinance states a maximum density of 2.2 dwelling units per acre, which is, or 2.25 dwelling units per acre, which is well below the three that's allowed in the, in the land use plan. One thing, one proposed condition we'd like to add this evening, and it's kind of restating what they already show, is that the maximum number of houses within PUD 25-1 shall be 55. Just add that as a condition number 10, and I'll go through that here in a second why. In terms of additional zoning code or stuff in your ordinance, that the lots have a minimum width of 60 feet, and that's laid out in R-PUDs in the zoning code in general. There must be a 50-foot buffer with any residential lots, to the, any adjacent residential lots to the north or to the east. Right now, they're showing that 50-foot buffer with the lots being less than 20,000 square feet. There is an opportunity. If they don't want to provide that 50-foot buffer, then every lot that's adjacent to existing lots has to be at least 20,000 square feet. The building setbacks, 30-foot minimum front yard, 35-foot rear yard, five-foot side yards, but no principal structure be within 15 feet of each other. And these are the same setbacks that we've done with Sky Crossings, with Cedar Brook, with Turner Redevelopment, and the Bridalwood over the last couple of years. In terms of density, our zoning code defines, has a very simple definition of density, where it's just a number of dwelling units per acre of land. With this project being 25-point, about 25.2 acres, they have a density of, it's actually, if you do the calculation, it's 2.18 dwelling units per acre, but then they also excluded the little over half acre that included the cell phone tower. And so I wanted to make sure that we get the number of units nailed down. That's why I said, propose to add that condition number 10 and say it's 55, because if they changed their mind about the cell phone tower in the future, then they could actually add, if they were at the 2.25 dwelling units an acre, they could add another house, a 56 house. So I didn't want it to look like we're saying 55, 55, 55, and then we come to site plan and it'd be 56. So that's why I wanted to add that condition number 10, so that what they're proposing, the 55 houses, is the maximum number we would get, should this ever go to a specific site plan stage. Now, I know going through planning commission and through some of the emails and comments that I've read, there's been several concerns that are more related towards the site plan stage, so I wanted to at least get out in front of those, even though they're not really up for, they shouldn't be considered tonight, I just wanted to try to answer some questions as they come up. One is that this, this development is within the impact fee district, the traffic impact fee district. So when we get to that final stage, if we get there and they're creating the lots, when they do the final subdivision, which is the document that creates the lots, they will have to pay an impact fee for the number of lots that they create. Right now, that's about $1,415 per lot, so doing the math, it comes out to about $77,800 in traffic impact fees. And what those are used for is, when we get to the specific site plan stage, there will be a traffic analysis done either by the applicant, or if ODOT doesn't warrant it, then staff will do at least a traffic analysis. And if there are any public improvements to existing roadways that are warranted by, based on that traffic analysis, the impact fees partially would pay for those improvements, and then the city street fund would also help pay for those improvements. Being in the impact fee district, that's, that's what's required when you're in that impact fee district. In terms of stormwater runoff, they did show a few locations on a concept plan where stormwater runoff ponds are potentially to be, but just wanted to reiterate that with any development, you cannot create an accelerated amount of runoff. So when we get to that second stage, that specific site plan stage, the engineers are going to really look at and make sure, however much impervious surface is created with that site plan, that the new stormwater detention ponds are large enough to encapsulate that additional stormwater, and then have it runoff slowly through the, through the pond, so that it's not an increased flow of water coming off the property as you would see from today. Also mentioned, there is a lift station that was put in a couple of years ago, or within the last couple of years, and I knew some residents were concerned about the, the location of that, because it's at the end of the Stub Street that we're, that the applicant's proposing to tap into. This is an issue that will be just really addressed at the specific site plan stage, and any movement, relocation, any updates or any upgrades or changes to the lift station will be, the cost of that will be borne by the developer, not by Green County, not by the city, and not by taxpayers. So there will be no additional cost to the public for that lift station. And just in general, the city's role in government, I just want to throw that out there, you know, the city does not have the ability to stop development. It's not zoning's job, or doesn't have the ability to zone something for no development. The only way the city could effectively stop development is if the city purchased the land using taxpayers' dollars. School impacts can't be considered when it comes to new residential projects, and traffic impacts, this being part of the traffic, traffic impact fee district, you know, the intent of that district is to overcome any traffic impacts that this project may have by using the impact fees that they'll be required to pay. So again, the city has no ability to just stop development, zoning is really here to help it develop orderly and in an orderly and appropriate fashion. Planning Commission reviewed the application at their January meeting, had the public hearing, and then voted to recommend approval at the March meeting. There are nine conditions in the ordinance, but again, I'm recommending that 10th condition be added, about the 55 homes max, but planning commission and staff recommend approval of the applicant's request based on the land use plan and based on the surrounding neighborhoods and zoning. I'll be happy to answer any questions following the public hearing.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing, so if you want to come forward, please state your name and address. You only have three minutes. You can have up to six more minutes donated to you by someone else in the audience. They will have to come to the podium and state their name and address as well.
James Williams, 2511 Bayview Drive. And I'm going to need more than my three minutes. My wife's going to donate, or is going to be me.
Have to state your name.
No, William's 2511 Bayview.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I think staff and around the homes got a hold of my presentation tonight, because they covered quite a bit of it, but I'm going to go ahead and press on anyways with it. As I said, my name is James Williams. My wife and I have resided at 2511 Bayview Drive for 25 years. We had that picture of the lift station up there. Ours was the driveway inside the red circle. I'm not going to go into the whole thing about the lift station and the history with that. If they're going to convert it to gravity feed, so be it. It's just unfortunate that the property owner couldn't have done it two years ago and saved $400,000 to the residents. On page three of the staff report dated March 20th, 2025, it recommends approval of the applicant's rezoning request based on conditions of zoning code section 158031. I don't know why that pertains to R1A housing, not RPUD, which is what we're, what we're discussing. Section 158.065 I-4 states, "The site will be accessible from current or planned thoroughfares adequate to carry traffic which will be imposed upon them by the proposed development." The roadways in Hillcrest and Grange View Acres are barely able to handle the traffic we have now, say nothing about adding another 55 working families. If you don't believe me, I welcome any of you to try to turn left out of either one of those developments during the daytime, especially rush hour in the morning and the afternoon. Section 158.071A states that "There should be particular attention devoted to the periphery of the development with the objective of compatibility of the development with its surroundings." I fail to understand how a development of $500,000 houses, the majority of which will be on .179 acre lots, is compatible with either Hillcrest, Hillcrest or Grange View acre plots, where the average home sits on larger lots and are valued at in the 220 to 250 area. I'm not sure where that 265 came from, but I question that. Surrounding the new development with an HOA-controlled 50-foot buffer zone as a way to get around these requirements can't possibly meet the spirit and intent of the zoning code. Section 158.071 states that "One or more permitted uses for an RPUD may be excluded if it presents a potential for significant environmental damages. The National Wetlands Inventory identifies a riverine system that flows from the back of my property through the proposed development and eventually on to the Mad River. Just to the west and downhill of the proposed development is an area identified on the National Wetlands Inventory as a freshwater emergent wetland. I'm not an engineer, but I don't believe the proposed development retention ponds will adequately protect either of these features." The same section also states that "The permitted use for an RPUD may be excluded if it will adversely affect or impact adjoining or surrounding developments." There's no way this new development will not adversely affect the surrounding development. First, although the proposed housing, housing development will raise our property values, it will eventually raise our already burdensome property taxes. Those of us on fixed income, and let me assure you, there's a lot of us, may not be able to sustain the increased tax burden and will most likely have to leave our homes. Secondly, although we've been told that traffic is not a determining factor in rezoning, it will adversely affect our developments, thus falling under this section of the zoning code. The increased traffic flow will cause significant safety issues, as well as add to the just mentioned extreme frustration of trying to get out of the neighborhoods on to Grange Hall Road. I'm also concerned about eventually losing our on-street parking due to the increased traffic on our narrow neighborhood streets. The next issue of concern is water drainage onto my property. The city undertook a major project, project to address water runoff issues at and adjacent to our property in the early 2000s. They came back out several years ago to repair problems with the initial project. I'm very concerned about what effect any additional hardscape and changes to the topography will have. Finally, immediately after the tornado, Beaver Creek PD did an outstanding job of shutting down access to Grange View Acres subdivision, virtually eliminating the potential for looting and other crimes. This was helped in part by the limited access to this area. Opening additional access points is going to increase the potential for crime in our nice safe neighborhoods. As an aside, at the planning commission meeting, several of us expressed our displeasure at the fact that people in the affected subdivisions, but outside the 500-feet requirement, did not get any written notice of that hearing as permitted in the zoning code. Because they'll definitely be impacted, but didn't get written notice of this meeting, our concerns apparently fell on deaf ears. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
I'm David Dempsey. I live on Rolling View Drive. I love 2451. I am directly behind that property. The traffic that's going to go through just our streets is going to go from about 25 to 35 people running up and down the streets to 200 people running up and down the streets. This is not going to happen. I mean, and when they do build all these houses back there, they're going to have to hook up to the sewer system somehow. Right now, the sewer system is just barely right. And so, if they start adding 50 houses to the back there, where my property is located is directly to the bottom of the hill when you come on Rolling View Drive, so I have the bottom property. Now, whenever it rained real hard before and they turned that new pumping station on full tilt, my basement filled up with about 18 inches of sewer. I went into that. So, I'm hoping that somebody is going to look into this whole thing. If this does go through, that they're going to have to put in some kind of a major improvement on the city sewer right there. Now, I'm really upset that they're going to put up all this traffic onto Graham Drive. If you haven't been out there, see Graham Drive, it's a very narrow two-lane road. There is no, hardly any parking on the street. You can't get two cars passing if you do. That is not going to make it, because all of these houses are going to be affected by all the traffic that's going to go up there, not alone to say the trucks and everything that are going to go in now, but they're going to build those 500 or 50 houses or however many they're going to put back in there. All that stuff is going to affect Graham Drive, and that's the only way they're going to be able to get in and out of it. They're not going to come all the way down through another plat to get into their plat. They're going to come straight down Graham Drive and onto Kemp Road. And improving, improving, you'd have to improve that whole thing up in the, in the end of where Graham, excuse me, where, got me screwed up here. Where it comes on, where Graham comes out onto Grange Hall. That's the only place that they can get in and out of that place. Now, somebody's got to do some kind of a traffic pattern around there somehow and fix that. Thank you.
To the council, I have two members coming to donate some time to me.
Rebecca Moody, 2415 Rolling View Drive.
Charlie George, 2407 Rolling View.
Good evening. My name is Clayton Neip. I live at 2379 Grange Hall Road. I have sent in a written letter to the council, just for record, but I'd like to speak on some of the items that are in that letter here tonight. To echo what Mr. JR Williams has already stated, it looks like a lot of things have already been touched on, but I'll touch on them again, because there's nothing like beating a dead horse in my right. All right. So, on the stormwater lift station, we understand that there is a condition, there are condition number seven, that it will have special attention paid to it, and we see in these presentations that we're going to have the developer pay for the removal, fill in, whatever you want to call it. The question I have, and I know they touched on going to gravity feed, the reason for the lift station was that there were two easements that were needed to put a gravity feed in originally, one on the Thoman property, and then one on the Moats property to the south. That's that farmland at the very southern border. Both were denied. One was fought quite valiantly by Ms. Thoman and an unnamed attorney. With that said, I would like that answered as to how that new gravity system is going to go in and what, if it's going to be able to handle the additional 55 houses plus everything that's uphill from it. I know we can't talk too much about water runoff, because again, somebody's already talked to it, but this neighborhood has long dealt with the issue. In particular, the property to be rezoned has been dealing with it since 1992 and 2002. This is based on the recollection of Ms. Thoman in a city council meeting that serendipitously happened about 10 years ago, almost to the day. So, back in February of ninth, or February 9th of 2015, this was in response to the widening of Grange Hall Road that she received in March of 2014. She makes a very good point that Families Farm was already beginning to flood, ravines were deepening, sometimes as much as 18 feet deep, and that was just with the building of what is now known as the Beaver Creek Health and Rehab prior to the Grange Hall She did have a bit of a worry about what this Grange Hall expansion was going to do, and I think she had a pretty good forthright, well, I'll say uncanny foresight to it. Mr. Moats, who owns property to the south, even had to help fill in some of those ravines that were picked up and deepened by that water runoff. The lift station is there to help handle that. If it goes away and that new sewer system is not capable of handling that, we're going to see even more potential problems, which brings me to my next point. And Mr. JR has already touched on it, but I'll touch on it again. We have in the property immediately to the west about 230, 240 feet approximately from the western boundary where the majority of all that construction is happening, there is an emergent freshwater wetland. It is recognized by the US Geological Survey and the US Fish and Wildlife. I hate to poke a bear that the city's been dealing with just recently with the whole Shell Station fiasco, but do we want the EPA or the federal government down on our heads any more than they already are? That's all I have to say about that. Now, as to the issue of the number of houses, I do enjoy that we are putting a cap on it at 55. The problem is not the cap, it is how these houses are placed and how it affects the character of the neighborhood and the surrounding neighborhoods. It's simply not in keeping with the surrounding neighborhoods where the maximum that we're seeing in most neighborhoods is about a one acre, and the minimum is about .4 to .5 of an acre. To see those houses come in and at the price point that they are going to come in, that $450,000 to $500,000, that is not within keeping of the property surrounding it, the developments around it, and it does affect the general welfare of the citizenry. Taxes, as they will go up, I was looking at my, the Green County GIS just this morning, my personal property tax has gone up $800 since I settled down in the area back in 2020. If a levy passes for the school, it's going to go up another 375 if this development goes in, and now I have $450,000 to $500,000, making my area and the subdivisions around it marketable and very, very desirable. How much is that price going to go up? I'm not a fixed income person, but I am a sole provider for my family. I found Beaver Creek back in 2020 when I was hemming and hawing about separating from the Air Force, and I decided to set roots down in the city because I found it favorable. It had that nice rural feel that I was looking for. It was quiet. My little corner of Beaver Creek was my own, and I could do what I wanted with it. However, I feel with this coming in, not only am I going to be pushed out, and so is my neighbor to the south of that property, Stuart Moats. You have two homes right there looking right back into his, into his field. Him and Amber are, how can I say it? They're, they're big, hard folks. They care, care of a lot of rescue animals, rescue farm animals. Eventually, there's going to be some complaints brought against them, and I fear for that, because that's going to be a big push of the, well, there were three-in-one tree service, but now unstable lumberjacks. That's going to push them out of the area, and they've been very, very big, hard in contributing to the area. I remember when I first moved in, we had some leftover damage from the 2019 tornadoes. I called up Stu. I said, "Hey, I have this problem. I've got a tree leaning. It's dead. It's about to fall down. I don't want my kids hit." He came up there with a chainsaw and a smile and cut that thing down for me free of charge. I owe a lot to that man. I don't want to see him be pushed out by any of this. So, I think I've hit on taxes enough. Let's talk about traffic and crime. Mr. JR Williams has touched on traffic. He is a, oh, how many years have you had in law enforcement? Over 40 years of law enforcement. I myself have not touched that. I only did about seven, but then I passed on to security, and both agree, law enforcement and security backgrounds agree, that when you add ingress, ingress points to neighborhoods, developments, you are going to increase traffic through those neighborhoods and developments. Currently, the Garden View, Grange View Acres plat has one way in and one way out. With the Hillcrest plat, we have three ways in, three ways out on Grange Hall, but that three ways in, three ways out usually doesn't affect us too much. It's very impractical for somebody to try to drive through that neighborhood to dodge traffic. By connecting these two plats together through this Bayview to Graham Drive, you're going to see traffic dodgers and people trying to beat any sort of rush hour going through our neighborhoods. With that increased traffic through the neighborhoods, we are going to see a propensity for a rise in crime. You're going to see more houses, more people are going to see it versus now where we can pretty much police our own. We know who's around here. We know who's not supposed to be there, who is and who has business there. In fact, I think my first run-in with Charlie George over here, I was doing some betting on my brakes, going a little bit too fast. He made sure that I knew that that was not sad. We police our own. That will go away. And again, I know we've touched on this and that we said that traffic cannot be considered, but going back to the zoning code, we talk about safety and general welfare of the surrounding neighborhoods and the established citizenry. That is directly tied. I know it's semantics. I know it's common vernacular that's going to get us in the end, but I think that should be legally taken into consideration. That's all I have for the council at this moment. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello again. Bob Trout, 2187 Basset Court. Let me get my reading glasses on so I can see what I'm going to say here. Reviewing this rezoning pud, I was a little bit concerned from the standpoint that the requirements listed in resolution, page two, paragraph six, it specifies 30-foot front yards, 35-foot backyards. The topo map itself that was on there, down in the notes, indicated it was a 25-foot front and 25-foot rear. I have issues with that since it's not even complying with the requirements that were specified. Also, it specifies that there's a five-foot minimum side yard, and that would be 10, and the principal, between principal structures is 10 feet, no closer than 15. That's seven and a half. And my question is, air condensed, air conditioning condenser that will be sitting outside the properties, probably on the sides nearest, is that going to affect it? Because that sticks out about four feet. So, we need to be aware of that, need to verify that that's not going to be an issue. Structure density of 2.25 is based on a total acreage of 25.195 acres. Yet, the way it's laid out there, they only have 11.7 acres as being developed for the homes. That generates a density of 4.7 structures overall. If you look at the top line on the, on Graham Drive, there are 17 units on there. That is a three-acre section, three acres, and that gets you down to 17 lots at a 5.66 structure per acre limit, okay? That is nowhere near your 2.25. Again, they've adjusted some of the things. All right, the disparity results from the green space, a 50-foot setback, water retention ponds, a drainage stream, leased area, and access easement. I can understand that. I live in Hunter's Ridge, and I do live adjacent to one of the water retention ponds. It's empty 90% of the time, but when we have a rough rain, I can assure you, that thing gets very full to the point, to the point that sometimes it has to go to the overflow area, which is going to flood. So, if you don't have a sufficient amount of retention capability, we're going to have problems downstream. All right. Natural rainwater control significantly altered and concerns will arise as water will wind up flowing down into the adjacent property and the associated impacts that that will generate. Additionally, several build plots have elevations very close within six feet to the stream in there. That's based on what I can, it looks like their two-foot contour line. Is that my time? Thank you. Pardon?
4108 Royston Drive.
What's your name?
Megan Lesnowski.
Megan Lesnowski.
All right, I really don't have that much more to go down. But, like I said, just looking at just the topograph map and everything else like that, the drainage area and everything else, I have concerns that there's going to be some serious problems for the folks or the property that's down, downstream on that thing that gets in there. And additionally, in some areas, it looks like there's a 20-foot variance for a 60-foot lot. So that's a 10-foot drop for every 30 feet. That is a significant drop for families and stuff out there. So, like I said, I just have some issues. And I'm disappointed that the reviewers that recommended approval on this thing didn't list or provide any kind of discrepancies for us to view. If there was questions that were generated during, during the review process, we're not privy to that, and that's an unfortunate issue as far as I'm concerned. And that is all I have. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Rachel Toyati from 2503 Windover Drive. And so, we are one of the streets that later down the line, as they expand, this will be connected to this new housing development. And so, my concerns are, I feel like we're putting the cart before the horse here. So, our, we've talked about our roads, we haven't talked about our children. So, 55 new homes, these are family homes, young children come with those family homes. Our school system is already struggling with fewer teachers, more children within those classes, teacher burnout, and you're going to add more children to those classes. So, I feel like that's another issue on top of that. We are also within a three-mile radius of Rite State. And so, Rite State has a minimum of two endangered bat species, and those are also under research. And so, this is a big area that if you start building on that, could affect these endangered animals. So, I would like to see some research. You could even fund different Rite States and help your communities there, but there should be more research within endangered animal species there. And I think there is going to be an increase with crime, and transportation is already a problem. And Grange Hall was already a mess when we were working on that last summer. You would sit in traffic for 30 minutes trying to get through, and that's only going to increase if you're building more homes there. And I do urge you guys, drive through this community, these communities that you're talking about adding on to, and if you drive through these communities and you say, "Yes, these are going to flow well together if we connect these roads," it's not going to look like we just built $500,000 homes in the middle of these affordable living communities because that is why we live there. Me and my significant other are in our 20s, we have older people on fixed income. We live in this unique area of Beaver Creek because it is one of the only little niches that still has affordable living within Beaver Creek. And sadly, we're pushing affordable living out with different complexes like this. So, I think that is something to consider. What do you want to do for your future of Beaver Creek? Because you won't, you're going to spit out these children from your education system, and they're not going to be able to stay within your community and feed back to your community if you can't give them somewhere to live. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kobe Courier, 2503 Windover Drive. Like she said before me, we are one of the streets that they will be connecting to eventually down the line when they add on to this neighborhood. I do want to state, starting off, I wouldn't even know about this meeting if it wasn't for some of my neighbors that came around and put signs on our doors and things like that to let me aware of the situation. But, I grew up in Beaver Creek, lived here my whole life, and I never thought I was going to be able to afford a house in Beaver Creek and stay close to my family. But luckily, I ended up getting a house at a good time, and I've been able to afford it, but my taxes have went up every year, and there's a lot of fixed income and older people that live in my neighborhood too that it's starting to weigh on us after the tornado. They fixed up a lot of the houses in the neighborhood, which has been great, but it's also drove the prices up. And with that, I want to say, it's great, my house value has went up, but I couldn't sell my house and buy another house in Beaver Creek and be able to afford it. I lucked out and got it at a good time. These new neighborhoods that they're building, like she was saying, are nothing like our current houses. 10 feet between houses is not even close to what our neighborhoods are like now. And has, as everyone else has stated before, the traffic is horrible. I really do encourage you to try to pull out there before base work starts at eight or coming and trying to leave at five. And I do want to read, I encourage you guys to go online and look up Miranda Homes, check them out on BBB and Yelp. They have a one-star review on Yelp and a 1.4 on BBB. So, some of the comments are basically Miranda Homes is quantity over quality, they can build cheap quality houses in three months or less, which they can sell quick and move on to the next victim. And there's plenty more like that. The half-acre lots that most of us are on now are nothing like the quarter-acre lots that they're going to build for $500,000 houses when our houses are lucky to sell for $250,000. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Renee Roberts. I live at 2577 Windover Drive, located in Grange View Acres. Grange View Acres is the second oldest plat in the city of Beaver Creek, and I know this because my grandparents built one of the very first homes in this neighborhood halfway up Rushton Drive. I've lived there my entire life, and I have lived there in my current home for almost 33 years. My concerns with this include building 55 homes on 25 acres, the notification process, water shed, the wetlands to the west, and connecting Bayview Drive to this new housing development. Since the 50s, there's been one way in and one way out of Grange View Acres, supporting a sense of community and of safety. I have a whole bunch of points of why that shouldn't happen, but I'll hold those to Phase 2, as I heard that that really is for the actual development plan. But I would like for discrepancy to be clarified at the March 5th Planning Commission meeting. Minutes were presented from the January 15th Planning Commission meeting. In those minutes, Mr. Francis moved to approve PUD 25-1 with nine conditions. One of those conditions, maximum density for this R PUD shall be 2.19 dwellings per acre. In today's agenda and in the paperwork for this meeting, that same condition states maximum density shall be 2.25 dwelling units per acre. Why has this changed? Those meetings were approved at 2.19 dwellings per acre. I know it seems like a small amount, but when you're talking about 25 acres and the potential development of the next 150 acres, that makes, that makes a difference. And I'd like to know why it's different in this version than what we saw approved on March 5th. I'd also like staff to clarify something. When they were making the presentation of that there's a 20,000 square foot minimum per lot, and then the 50-foot buffer between the existing neighborhood and this new development, I, I thought I understood, maybe I misunderstood that part of that fix, that they could cut into that 50-foot barrier? And so, my question is, is there leeway that maybe there'll be parts that aren't 50-foot left alone between our existing neighborhood and this new development? Because the proposed lots are not that 20,000 square feet minimum requirement. In the closing, I just, at the, I'm very nervous, I'm sorry. At the zoning commission meeting, staff, staff presented a slide repeatedly that contains sentences highlighted in red. And the takeaways, "We can't stop development, we can't save trees, and we can't take into account the effects on our school system." This really bothered me. Decisions for the development and betterment of our community are not being made holistically. Development decisions do have consequences, and everyone should be considered. Current residents and their quality of life matter, and the impact on the infrastructure and on our schools does matter. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Berzey, Tennessee, 2451 Rolling View. My husband bought that house over 52 years ago, and it's always been a nice, quiet neighborhood. Matter of fact, the only time we saw traffic, it was like if there was a wreck on Grange Hall, or if someone was having a garage sale, then you'd see the cars goodbye. Otherwise, nice, quiet neighborhood. And it really breaks my heart because our neighborhood has turned in to where the younger people have moved in, and we've got kids in our neighborhood again. And they're riding their bikes up and down, because ours is Rolling View because it's like this, and the kids love to ride the bikes, and they love to play, and they're out there every day, not in the house on their computer, they're playing. With this traffic that's going to be coming through the neighborhood, the parents may be afraid to let the children out riding their bikes. I mean, our neighborhood is like it used to be, and it's, I mean, you're too young and don't know about it, but in the 60s, where the kids played outside and played hide and seek, and rode their bikes, and played kickball, and had a good time. I'm afraid with this being built, our neighborhood's not going to be like that again. And it'll be so sad for those children. Thank you.
My name is Jim Leifer, 2620 Bayview Drive. I think you guys are getting ahead of this whole situation. You know you're going to rezone this 175 acres. So it seems to me that you guys could go in there and say, "Hey, we're going to put a horseshoe road in here to where they both go out on Kemp Road." That eliminates disturbing that plat and that plat. Easy peasy. Bottom line. That's all I have to say.
I'm not good at public speaking. My name's Jill Batters. I live at 4083 Rushton Drive. First of all, I want on the record how grateful I am for my community as a survivor of the It has given me the opportunity to get the, to know them even better, and that part of the tornado is worth it because these are wonderful people behind me. It's not that we are against growth. I'm grateful we can all speak today, and hopefully, you all will take serious thought of what we are asking and providing because we live there every day. My community sees me in my bright vest, walking all the time. I walk my dogs every day possible in my little neighborhood, and it has actually brought me a lot of peace from dealing with the tornado. I'm upside down from the tornado. I'm a person whose insurance could care less that I lost everything. So, I'm struggling, like other people here, still trying to live in my home and not lose it. And that is the emotions that you see today. We all want our home values to be good, but I don't want mine falsely inflated. I'm concerned about Bayview. When you come off of Rushton and turn left on Bayview, the line of sight is not that great. I experience cars that can't see me with my bright vest on, and I'm a person who will step off the, into the grass when I walk my dogs and see a car coming. But I have almost been hit walking my dogs. I go actually five miles an hour trying to go down the hill to round up onto Rushton. So I'm worried about that. And the other feeling that hopefully, I think other, that I state this correctly, that other neighbors have had, is while we have enjoyed one way in and one way out of our neighborhood because of the safety and security and the quiet that it provides, why does that get to change now? I've lived in my neighborhood, I lived there before my divorce for seven years, and then after my divorce, I fought to get right back into this neighborhood because this neighborhood is wonderful. I've been there so long, when I moved in there, I'm pretty sure I was only one of two homes that had children in it. It was an older neighborhood because, and they were so proud of how long they'd lived there. I miss my neighbor that passed away after the tornado. He was 90 and lived there from the time the neighborhood was built. My daughter is looking at keeping my home because I'm trying to set her up because, like these other wonderful young people, everybody wants to live in Beaver Creek. Where's the affordable housing for our kids to start and keep our community fresh as the life cycle turns? Thank you for hearing me.
I am Amber Stamman from 3942 Garden and 4000 Garden. I am the farm to the south of there where I rescue animals, we have the tree service. We helped as many of these people as we could through the tornado. We saw how tight-knit this community is. My son has grown up in this neighborhood. This is so much going to affect the traffic, and I know they've said it over and over, "Come to the neighborhood, find out." But I, I heard them say something about that they have to sit so much aside for this, for analyzing it and everything else, but that'll never take care of what the city's going to have to pay for to fix Grange Hall to get all these cars out of there, or to fix Kemp to get all these cars out of there. I know it's all about money, you're going to get more property taxes, everything else, but everybody else is going to be so affected. They want to come through our property again with the easement. I shut it down the last time. I'll fight them on this one for these people. So, I don't know how they're going to do it. I know there's wetlands there. I know all of this runoff is a problem because we see it on our property from the buildings that went across Grange Hall. All of that comes down and washes out our property. We've put culverts in after culverts, and they all wash out, so I don't see any way that they're going to fix that. The safety, the tight-knit communities, our little community, nothing will be the same. This isn't treeline, this isn't the open land. This is two really tight-knit communities that are going to have cookie cutter houses put in, and they're going to be so out of place. And, yeah, they're not going to have the patience that we all have with that traffic because they're not used to it, they're not going to know what they're getting into. So they're going to get into those properties, and then they're going to have to face these issues after the fact. Nobody's going to tell them. So, what are we going to do? We're going to shut down Grange Hall again after we just widened it and put what, roundabouts in, traffic lights in, whatever it is in? The research shouldn't come after the fact. The research, research should come in before. So like she said, putting the cart before the horse, I think a lot of that is an issue. All that study should be done beforehand to see whether it can handle this, and I can guarantee you it can't handle it the way it is. And they're not paying for it. So they say that they have to fix that Bayview lift station. They're not offering me the amount that it'll take to move that. They're offering me pennies compared to what it would take to move that. So they have the funds for that. So they have the funds for that. They're going to set aside a little bit for traffic. Oh, that's going to help you guys a lot. It's not. But I'll stand for these people right here and for the animals that I take care of and I allow all these people to bring their kids to my farm, to see animals, to experience farm life. I think everybody needs to look into the details before saying yes to all of this. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, Stu Moats, four thousand Darden Drive. I wasn't going to speak, but that's my beautiful wife that came in front of me some like with dag on it. Wearing my same dancing boots I did for planning and zoning. So we're working today. Thank you guys for sitting on the board. I mean, I know this is a thankless job and it's not going to be an easy decision. So I appreciate you guys for that. Really just like with the planning and zoning, I just wanted to mention that we were planning, we had a verbal right of first refusal for this acreage, for the Thoman property. And we were just going to expand our rescue and the horse stable basically into pasture land, which is what it used to be back in the day. And then, because we even had a, we had a, what do you call it from the bank? We had a preapproval. There you go. So we had a preapproval, it was already in place, and then there was some disagreements with the heirs of the Thoman property. So they couldn't figure out what was going on with the cell phone tower versus the rest of the property. And then next thing I know, I heard about eight months later that they were selling it to developer. So after about three weeks of being pretty upset, I just was like, all right, I'm not going to let it ruin me. So, but yeah, I mean, but for a long time, because we even, we built our horse stable, we scaled it for that extra twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six acres. It's supposed to have an acre per large animal. So we built our stable because we had that verbal right of first refusal. And then we're like, oh, people stink sometimes. So it didn't, it didn't work out. But either way, again, I appreciate you guys volunteering and being a part of the community.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
My name's Josiah Kagan. My family and I are at twenty-six ninety-one Longwood in the Gardenview area. And our main concerns about it are the traffic. If you do drive through like other neighbors have asked, it is extremely tight and sometimes very dangerous out there in Grange Hall. I do know that that area is a place that we like to walk as a family and to have increased traffic coming through that area is going to present a challenge and really it's going to change the character of the area. The whole feel of a tight-knit community, kind of a relaxed environment back there. We, in two thousand seventeen, when we bought our property there, we made a choice to live in Beaver Creek. I work in Kettering, but part of the reason was it was more affordable for me to live in Beaver Creek. However, as time has gone on, the taxes have continued to rise. In the last year, my taxes went up nineteen hundred dollars. And I anticipate that there's going to be more tax increases as a result of these coming in. And that is, that's a problem for us and I'm sure other folks are feeling the weight of the taxes rising. And so I just, I want a voice on the taxes. I want a voice on the traffic. And I too, when this was going through planning and development, I called in and they said, well, we don't, we don't do the research. We don't, we don't do the traffic studies until afterwards. That seemed a little bit backwards to me as well. This is going to be an issue and what is happening on the lower Grange Hall road, if it doesn't happen on upper Grange Hall road, I don't see how we are going to sustain that increased traffic on there. And we've already had some pretty deadly accidents out there coming out of the subdivisions. And I know coming out of there, sometimes part of the day, we're waiting a long while out there to add traffic into that. It's going to be a very difficult thing. So thank you for the time. Those are our concerns.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? We have had, Debbie, we have had several.
Yes, we have had. I've received several emails, all in opposition.
Okay, if there's no more input from the public, I'm going to close the public part of the hearing and we will open it up to council. We'll start with Councilman Littler.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, everybody, for coming up and talk. I know it's not easy for everybody. You did, you really did a great job. All of you did, everything. And I think we all have a lot to work through here, everything from bats to a basement full of sewage to people don't like the traffic. Traffic's always an issue every single time it comes up. Every, every, since I've been on council, it's something everybody brings up and then we are told that it's not some, a reason that we can just say, well, we think traffic will increase, so we have to say no. All right, so I'm going to put that out there right now. But I do have several questions. The first I have for the builder, if you don't mind. I had a couple, a couple of questions in regards to, I know you spoke about size of homes. I had questions regarding, I know you said that they even had an ability to maybe even add a third garage. In your development, are you looking at developing these properties in a way to where the garage sizes for the, for these homes actually fit two cars?
Minimum two car, yeah. And some homes, depending on the width, have an option to add a third car. And there was one plan that has a tandem third car garage, so two of them stacked and then one, like minimum two car.
Actually, my question was, will two cars actually fit in these garages?
Yes, yes.
Because the garages that are being built now in spec sized houses, you may be able to pull two cars in, but you could never get out of the vehicles.
Yeah, no, you can't. I mean, if you have a F three fifty super duty duly, probably not. But if you have a, you know, Ford, a Ford Expedition and a Ford Taurus, they'll, they'll fit next to each other.
Will setback on these houses allow for vehicles in driveways?
Yeah, so there's a thirty-foot front setback.
Okay.
So that would allow two more, at least two in the driveway, depending on the size.
All right. And you, you mentioned that you had developments in Huber Heights and in Troy? Was that right?
Correct. Yeah, they're under development right now. They'll be paved in probably summer.
So, so they're currently being developed? So they've already gone through the whole process?
Everything's approved.
And how large are these in comparison to what you're doing here?
So in Troy, they are all fifty-one foot lots minimum and Huber Heights is forty-five foot lots minimum.
Okay.
Both smaller. And our community in Liberty Township are sixty-five foot lots and our average sale price, I believe, is six fifty.
Okay, all right. And the roadways that you're proposing for this development, what is the width of this? I mean, I know I'm getting ahead of myself because we're not in that process yet, but consideration and, and you heard everybody here say, if you get cars parked on the road, you can't even get through neighborhoods.
Sure.
And I've heard it on other presentations also. And you don't have to give me an answer, but I do, if this goes forward, do take that in consideration on these, these widths because it keeps coming up as a major, major problem in neighborhoods around Beaver Creek.
In the engineering phase, we get into, is it parking on both sides of the street or just one? What is the street width? Yeah, I'm not an engineer, so I'm not the one to ask, but that's always discussed in the engineering phase.
Okay. And, and final for you is the, because you're in the process and you, and you've done these developments in the past, I actually have two more questions. The timeframe that you look at doing these developments, what is your, I don't know, basic average build time? You said that every home is, even though they're kind of spec houses, they're not. They're, they're a spec custom home is basically what you're building. Are, are they sell the lot, the individual has X number of days to complete the build or is it, I could build, I could come in your neighborhood and buy a, buy a lot and I'll say, I'll come back and build a house five years from now?
No, no. So it's, we own the lots and we transfer the lot with the home, so they don't buy the lot ahead of time. So a normal process, they would have their sale, there'd be sixty to ninety days for permitting and for them to make all their selections. And then the home would start and our average build time is probably five or six months. So from the time of sale to the time of closing, we'd say about nine months.
Okay. Because I thought that you'd said during your presentation that you sold lots and then you, okay.
Sold the home with the.
All right. And, and the final question, you did mention briefly that you had the discussion with Green County in regards to the, that, that station pump in that area already. Was there any type of negotiation with them at the time on how to fix it or maybe you'd fix it or maybe they would help fix it or there is a solution or it's going to have to have something done?
Yeah. So we, our engineers been in discussions with Green County. Their initial request for the site was that we not include a lift station, that we eliminate a lift station that connect to gravity sewer. So that's what our intention is. But anything beyond that is not my area of expertise, to be honest.
All right, okay.
Our engineer takes that. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. That's all I have to do. And I have something for Brandy.
Yes, sir.
There, and I, I sympathize with some of the audience here in the sense that I was a little confused also with the, in lieu of the property size, the fifty-foot setback. So I have a couple of questions, or the fifty-foot buffer zone that we mentioned. All right. The way that I originally read it and I thought, well, that's not so bad, is, am I looking at a fifty-foot buffer plus the thirty-five foot before the house? Is that what we'd be looking at?
As the site, as the concept plan, you would have the fifty-foot, the fifty-foot area is not going to be owned by the individual homeowner. It would be owned by the HOA.
Okay.
And then from that property line between the fifty-foot buffer and then, then you'd have to come back thirty-five feet for the rear yard setback for the principal structure.
Okay. So the thirty-five feet would begin at their side of the fifty-foot.
For the principal structure, now we allow sheds to be ten feet off the property line in any neighborhood.
Yeah, but, yeah, I understand that.
But the building setback, the rear yard setback, that, that would be where you couldn't put the principal structure.
Okay, all right. Have we done this before? Has this happened? I mean, the fifty-foot in lieu of budding up to R one A, the lot sizes, I know that we approved over there off of, man, the road just, I want to say Swiger.
No, it was on, yeah, Alpha Belrock, they had the fifty-foot.
Okay.
And same, yeah, I guess Swiger did also have the fifty-foot.
But they did, the one on Swiger, the fifty-foot didn't, it didn't change the fact that the lots on that back, that whole back row were, still needed to be in compliance with the same lot sizes as the houses behind them?
That wasn't a buffer, that was a no-cut zone, so it was different. That was still owned by the property owner, so they could include it in the twenty thousand square foot lot size. It was just an area of no cut, so they couldn't cut trees that were less than, that were larger than four inches in diameter. This is where it's a separately owned property so that the homeowner can't do anything on the HOA's property and it stays in its state as it is now. This was kind of what the zoning code states, that any lot that directly abuts an adjacent twenty thousand square foot lot has to be twenty thousand square foot lot, where this, the fifty-foot buffer is its own individual lot, so the home lots don't directly abut it.
Right. Where, where did the fifty-foot come from? Was it just?
We require a fifty-foot buffer between multifamily, if they were to do a multifamily residence, like a condo or a apartment unit at this place, which if the man use plan allowed it, that's, we require a fifty-foot buffer there. So we treated this with that same fifty-foot buffer. Originally, they came in, they wanted to do twenty or maybe twenty-five or thirty feet and we said, no, if you're going to do that separate lot, it has to be at least fifty feet wide.
So with the fifty-foot, this is, because it seemed confusing to me, with the fifty-foot buffer, then you have the primary residents will be thirty-five feet inside of that from, from the line of the fifty-foot buffer.
Right.
Correct? All right. So what is the lot size permitted because it's not, not no longer abutting an R one A?
Well, there is no, in, in, we didn't have a minimum lot size for Sky Crossing, didn't have one for any of the other developments. There's no minimum lot size requirement with this one. It's minimum lot width of sixty feet.
Right. So it's all because of that fifty-foot buffer, though?
Right.
All right. Okay.
We just think in the long run, and it was kind of the discussion we had with the residents that abut the Bridlewood, is they, they would have rather seen the HOA own it so that they know that the trees and the landscaping will stay and the individual property owners that have that area won't tear down everything and won't put fences in that fifty-foot area. And that was their, their desire at the, from the Bridlewood neighborhood. And so this was kind of where we took that, put it in practice where it's now going to be owned by the HOA. And if we go through the specific site plans, we can have, will be able to add conditions such as that fifty-foot buffer shall remain unutilized as any, anything other than a wooded area.
All right.
And maintained in perpetuity by the homeowners association.
All right, that's my, that's my only sticker. So thanks. You did a great job. I appreciate it.
No problem.
Very much. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Councilman Kern.
I had a question for the builder here. Density has been an issue at this council. It was raised last week, it's been raised other times. I've got a question to ask you. Would you consider reducing less than fifty-five? Coming in with a smaller number of homes, which would reduce some of the issues that these people are raising about traffic and other things, what's the chances of coming in at forty or thirty-five?
Yeah, I don't know what the number is, the cutoff is from a cost. I mean, it's just a, it's a math equation that we do. So is there a number below fifty-five? Probably. I'm not sure where it is off the top of my head.
I see.
That's all right at this point, Your Honor.
Okay. Councilman Dur.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. And I want to thank everyone for attending today and so much engagement. A lot of people sent emails and I tried my best to respond and very thankful for that. Appreciate you taking time away from your families as well to come join us. Much appreciated. I live pretty close to your neighborhood. My children go to school with your children. Been to, my children have been to numerous birthday parties in, in both neighborhoods. And we were in the tornado zone as well, not nearly as impacted, but certainly many of the statements resonate. This property has four idiosyncrasies. There are just four very unique components and I think we need to delve deeper into that because when chatting with anyone in the neighborhood in and around it, water runoff is a huge deal. It was brought up by numerous residents, but it just, time and time again. So to the applicant, is there a plan to have basements with these homes?
Yes, there are. And to the stormwater point, because it does often come up.
Sure.
And I will put disclaimer again, I'm not an engineer, but I've, you know, I'm fairly familiar with the process. So they will, the engineer who's here to answer any specific questions about stormwater, if you want, will work with the city, Green County to ensure that the stormwater can only get better with this plan because right now the water is going wherever the water wants. So I understand that from a layperson's perspective, it looks like adding all this impervious surface would just cause a massive amount of water that would runoff everywhere, but we would not be able to begin construction if that was the case. So there'll be both our engineer, the county engineer, presumably the city engineer would all review that and the EPA would not issue a permit unless we showed through their calculations that stormwater would not affect any of the neighbors. So whatever runoff is happening right now will be less. And to the point that gentleman made about his basement flooding. And to the point that gentleman made about his basement flooding, any sewer issues would also have to be, I mean, this, this community would only improve any issues people are having, because we would have to prove that our capacity, or the flow that we're going to produce, that is on top of what is flowing already. There's capacity for that, and the system can handle that. So it would only be upsizing any, any system like that from a stormwater perspective and from a sanitary perspective.
From the map behind me, there are three stormwater management areas. Mr. Burkett, you mentioned there detention, not retention. Ponds, that's the, the plan? Just making sure my hearing's correct.
This is still very conceptual, so.
Sure. Okay.
It's hard to say whether or not there'd be retention or detention at this point.
Okay.
I mean, really, should the zoning go through, that's when they really delve into the engineering of the plan and getting all the roads laid out at the, at the right, you know, there, the, what am I, I'm trying to say, the right slopes, to make sure that the roads aren't too steep and not, you know, curving too much. And so they get really nitty-gritty on the grading plan. And that's when they determine the exact size and location of the ponds and the nature of those ponds.
Because there are three on the map, what's the measurement that led to three? Why not four or more space? Because it's a big, big issue in the area, it's known.
Yeah. I mean, if the engineer comes back and says they need four, or they need to be bigger than what they show, they're going to do that. I mean, they're not going to, I mean, this is just a concept. So if they need more area in the southeast corner, or if they need to put some in between, more in the, eliminate a lot and put some in the northeast corner, I mean, they'll have to meet our organ, our stormwater ordinance before we would ever recommend approval.
Thank you. Unique aspect is, number two is a lift station. We don't typically come across anything like that. It is, when you go down Vaiview, it's, it's different, it's imposing. And there's discussion, Mr. Williams, Mr. Knight both mentioned lift station, potentially gravity feed. To the applicant, does your company have experience dealing with this type of situation? Have you outsourced something like this to someone else?
With moving a lift station?
Yes.
I have not dealt with it personally in any of the developments I've worked on, but I'm sure whoever the contractor who does our roadwork has before. I mean, we use local contractors, so I don't want to speak for them, but I've heard of it happening before, I just haven't personally dealt with moving a lift station.
Okay. I just, it's an area of caution, because it's such a big deal in the area.
Yeah. It came up at the last meeting, and our engineer has been in touch with the city engineer regarding that.
Thank you. Unique feature number three is lot number fifty-three, the easement area that goes to the cell tower. What's the, what's the plan if there's a need for additional space? Maybe that's a question for Mr. Burkett, but just access to the area, something goes wrong? Is the easement okay? Because it also goes into the property of number fifty-three, and this is, you know, can be fairly normal, but this abuts right to the very corner of number fifty-three.
Right. The intent of the applicant, and we would see that at the specific site plan stages, they're going to relocate that gravel road, the exact location of which I don't know yet until I see the site plan, but most likely, they're going to bring it out, so that they're not requiring to go into the, that lot, or there'd be minimum encroachment into the, into that lot, minimum encroachment of an easement into that lot fifty-three. But again, until we see it on a specific site plan, you know, I can't, my guess would be, and correct me if I'm wrong, but my guess would be either coming straight out and straight up, so it's more, you know, less, less of an arc through the neighborhood lots, but more of a, a straight, you know, shot to the, to that future road of Graham, or a small stub out into the cul-de-sac.
Okay. Thank you. Unique feature number four is the wetlands that Mr. Knight brought up. Some point-two-five acres of freshwater emergent wetland. Maybe this is a question for city manager, but what kind of responsibility do we have? It's an adjoining property, so it's not within the boundaries that we're discussing, but it is a significant deal. It does have PEM one C status. The Ohio EPA has to sign off, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers have to come out, so presumably there have been numerous studies on this area by those entities. What responsibility do we have at this stage?
Really, really, it's, it's up to them to follow the Ohio EPA, and it's followed, for them to get the approvals from the EPA and the Army Corps of Engineer separately, just like, you know, if you were opening a restaurant, you have to get separate approvals for, from the Health Department to open your restaurant. It's not something the city would require a step from our end, other than, they're, I mean, if they don't follow it, they're going to get shut down by the EPA regardless if we approved it or not. So I mean, it's going to behoove them to get the, the correct approvals for their wetland mitigation, or any endangered species mitigation, or any of that before they ever start digging.
Given that very important answer to the applicant, what is, what's your plan?
What's our plan regarding wetlands?
Wetlands, but also Mrs. Coyote brought up endangered species.
Yeah, Indiana brown bat specifically, embarrassment. So to the point about wetlands, we will do a, what's called a wetland delineation, to ensure that none of this area is a protected wetland. And like Randy said, if it is, we will not get a permit to build anything. So that's part of our due diligence process. We don't anticipate that being an issue, but we will have that study done in regards to Indiana bat. So from April first through October first, on any site in this region, you're not allowed to clear trees. I'm sure Stu is very familiar with this, because that is the roosting season for the Indiana brown bat. So the clearing season is from October first up through the end of March, March 31st. So that is the time you're allowed to clear, because that's the time that that species is not roosting. So, yeah, that's a rule from the EPA that we have to follow.
Okay. Thank you. I think one final question, and I want to follow up on something that Mrs. Roberts said about the two-point-two-five versus two-point-one-nine. Can anyone speak to that, just to?
Yeah, and that, that's why I added that tenth condition, to ensure that the fifty-five homes become, remain the maximum. Because when we took it to planning commission, the zero-point-five-eight acre portion that encapsulated the, encapsulates the cellphone tower was included in the overall calculation of the acreage. And since the owners deciding to retain ownership of that lot and retain the cellphone tower, they took it out. But really, the way we calculate density, it's still two-point-one-eight, which allows fifty-six homes. So that's why we wanted to add that extra condition, that say you can't have fifty, more than fifty-five homes. It's just, the number of homes hasn't changed, it's just they withdrew some acreage, which changes the density.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Councilman Garcia.
Thank you. Yeah, Randy, just hang up. Can we, I want to, there, a lot has been said, so I want to make sure I'm not confused. Where is the entrance to this property? Where is it going to be built? Is it going to be coming off of Graham, or is it coming off of Vaiview?
Both. The intent is to have connections to both Vaiview and Graham.
At the initial development, not down the road, not, I mean, at, as you're starting to develop the first house, there will be access points from both of those roads.
Yeah, I mean, they're both right there in that northeast corner, so it wouldn't be, they would do a section that didn't include one of them or the other.
And does the current property owner also own the sections to the west and the south?
Those are the Gerlaw and, I believe, the, a different, a third party.
Okay. So when I pull up a map, I'm having a very difficult time seeing how we can connect this to Kemp. Is there a way that this can be done without going into other property owners' property?
Right now, to do it, I mean, you would have to either, the property owners would want to develop their property.
Right.
Ultimately, and continue to connect that road south. And the least desirable, not desirable way would be, if we wanted to do it now, we'd have to look into eminent domain powers.
Right. And that would include, in taking a look, it would have to be, either, it would have to be most likely connected to Rushton Drive.
And get out a little bit further.
Yeah. I mean, that's really the only way I could see this happening, is taking eminent domain of two properties who are not part of this conversation, and then connecting to Rushton, maybe, in the top, the very north, northern street.
Ultimately, the intent of the whole VPAs to get connection to Kemp. So you would have to, you'd have to go through several properties. And that's not.
Yeah. I mean, because I was thinking going around, going around, but there's, there's no way to do that either.
That would still, wouldn't solve the multiple access points.
Right. No, no, absolutely. Okay. I just wanted to see if there was anything, anything there. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're relieved. Mr. McHugh, I haven't seen you in a while. It's good to see you. So because you're here, I'm going to force you to answer all of the questions I always ask you during these hearings. Can we legally consider anything with traffic when it comes to making these decisions for rezoning? And if we can, to what extent?
Well, traffic, the Ohio Supreme Court has said that traffic is a responsibility of the jurisdiction, the city. That is our primary responsibility, traffic. Yes, you can have acceleration lanes, de-acceleration lanes, which are very unique to a particular development, but the general traffic, and that was a nineteen fifty-nine case, and I've also got one, a nineteen forty-two case, that increased traffic is not grounds to strike down a zoning. So effectively, if a project is otherwise legal within our zoning code, I'm not unsympathetic. People don't like traffic, I'm not crazy about myself, but it is unfortunately the reality that there's two roads coming into this. Eventually, I would hope there would be, if, when there's further development, that'll be a different scenario, but right now, we really can't prohibit development of the property, because the road system arguably is something that we would have to address.
Okay. And to what extent legally can we consider anything with the schools, since we are a separate entity?
Well, and we are a separate entity, and, you know, we, we don't, we can't control what the school system does, we can't control their building operations, their building, how they run the system. That is their jurisdiction. We certainly have no influence on their financing. And so again, it's not something in Ohio that we, you know, have control and jurisdiction over schools. They are separate. In some states, there is a kind of tie-in, but in Ohio, there is none. They are a separate legal entity. If they were to be sued, they are sued separately, we have no involvement in that. So we really have very little. And the case law is very limited on this, but there is a similar situation in '08 where the Ohio Supreme Court held that county commissioners, it was an exhortation, but again, that exhortations have their own standards, and the, and the Supreme Court said, county commissioners, you can't turn down and consider schools as a grounds not to grant an exhortation, because that is not within your, effectively, it's not within your jurisdiction. That is, that is not your area. You don't run the schools.
Thank you. And then very last one. Captain Mulner, I'm sure you're very excited to have to be here tonight. Can you come up for just one quick second, please? I did want to address the topic of crime, so I wanted to ask you, can, just in your experience, can we expect a noticeable increase in crime with this new development, specifically and generally in Beaver Creek? Are you seeing an increase in crime as we're putting in new developments? Because this is not something new to the city.
Of course. With every new development, I like to reference the crimes that happen most of the time in the neighborhoods, within the apartment complexes, or crimes of opportunity. Having said that, people leave valuables in their vehicles, they leave their vehicles unlocked, they leave keys in the vehicle. Those are the types of crimes that we see. While it would be premature to say that there will or will not be an increase in, in crime based upon the specific development, I can comfortably say that with other developments, we have not noticed any significant or serious increase in crime, both on a minor level property crimes, or any serious crimes, violent crimes. Beaver Creek, obviously, is still a very safe community. That goes without saying throughout the whole community. So I think it would be unfair to say that there would be a high chance of any significant increase in crime based upon any singular development anywhere within the city.
So mainly crimes of opportunity, is what you're saying?
Correct. Correct.
And I would say it is a relatively safe community because of this police department, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thanks for letting me call on you.
Sure.
Otherwise, I think that's it. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilman Schwartz.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, I'm going to ask a question. What are the elements that we can take into consideration should we want to deny rezoning?
Well, first, let me turn on. First, within, one, we need to consider what our land use plan provides for, what we intended, because we, we are, that is our roadmap of what was clearly thought of. So to do something that is contrary, I mean, to say that this will forever remain agriculture simply is not within what was the land use plan, and certainly, we would be outside of our plan there. So, you know, again, are we making a reasonable, rational decision based upon all the circumstances? Then, then we also need to know, is this, does it appear that will meet the requirements of our zoning code? You know, in this particular case, the density is, is significantly lower, whether you include the cell tower land or not, so it's still significantly lower than what the three-point-zero-one, so density is not an issue. Are the lots, do the lots appear, and again, this isn't specific site plan stage, but do, does this appear that fifty-five lots of the size, will they come meet within what we've had for others? And I will, and I think it's important to think back on some of the other lots, or some of the other subdivisions that have been built in the last few years, or approved in the last few years. I mean, is this in keeping with the general trend of what we've approved? And I believe, I believe it is. I defer to Randy on that, but I think he'll tell you that these lots are in keeping with what has been pretty well the structure of lots in the past here for the last few years. And again, is that in tune with what are in compliance with what our zoning code is? And I think the answer is yes. So, again, you're looking at the overall good of the, of the population, but, but again, there's a, within Ohio and within the United States, there is a right for people to develop their land. And that is, unfortunately, individuals with farms, you know, on the one hand, we like the farms, but the fact is, they also have a right to seek, to develop it.
So we can only, we look to the land use plan first, is one of the considerations. Isn't the land use plan a suggestion? A guiding principle of what we, what our thoughts are, but not necessarily we're beholden to?
It is, it is a guide. It is definitely a guide, but I think we would have to have some very strong evidence as to why this should forever remain, was in this case, A1. And within this particular area, there is now, it is an undeveloped piece of property, but it would be probably a misnomer to say that it is a rural area. This is not, you know, rural western or eastern Green County. I mean, this is, we, I mean, there aren't acres and acres of farms left. In fact, open land is pretty unusual in Beaver Creek these days. So I think that's where you have to look at what is, is this reasonable within the area? So.
Randy, I do have a question in that regard. So in looking at our previous lots and So in looking at our previous lots and the lots that we have developed over, we'll say, the past four years, or that have been developed in the past four to five years, how many of those lots have, and I think that Councilmember Littoral may have asked this question, but I'm going to ask it again, how many of those developments utilize the 50-foot buffer and did not match up to the properties that are abutting it?
This would be the first one that didn't have, that did have the 50-foot buffer without the matching properties.
And can you explain to me, forgive my ignorance, the VPA 19? What does that mean? What does that, I, I know you touched on it in your presentation, but it went over my head.
Yeah, the VPAs, those are vacant planned areas that we just have called out in the land use plan, so that you can, we can take an extra look at a piece of property when it comes to develop, rather than just being in the generally low-density residential and then that's the end of it. You know, there are, there's specific language for the VPAs that explain how, some of them just explain the topography of the land, some of them explain the topography and how it should develop. The VPA 19 basically explained that, you know, that this is an unapproved, it could be or should be accessed by a minor arterial Kemp Road when this was written, but that was an envision for the entire, if you were doing a large-scale development within VPA 19. I don't think it would be reasonable to require the top northeast corner, 14% of the property to build a mile and a half long road to get to it from Kemp Road, when it abuts adjacent residential that has stub streets that were stubbed for the purpose of connection.
So this only comes into play if we were trying to utilize Kemp Road?
Not necessarily, but I mean, the intent is just to give some extra explanation specific to the area associated with VPA 19. The, the connection to Kemp Road would only come into play, I think, if we were doing a very, where in the language it said, "large-scale development." And I don't think the 14% of the VPAs considered a large-scale development.
And this is not connecting to Darden, correct?
This would connect to the Bayview and Graham.
Which is listed in the VPA, correct?
Darden is, but it's not on this property, so we can't.
But Graham is.
Correct.
Is in the VPA.
Graham is not.
Can you go back to that language? I thought it was there, I apologize.
It may have said, any, secondary connections could be.
Secondary points to Graham and Darden should also be included. I guess my big question is, what does this mean? I mean, this VPA, so we, we're supposed to assess this, what would we be assessing?
For this particular one.
I know you're saying we're not, we're not going to apply it here, but should we, should we need to apply it? What would we be looking at?
If it were, say, if it were 50% of the VPAs, it was under this development plan, then that would give us a good reason to require connection down to Kemp.
And who's determined what that percentage is?
Really, it's a, it just says a very large development. So I mean, I guess that would be on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, I, I mean, I guess, kind of to that point, I mean, yeah, we have this smaller development, but in all of the conversations, we keep talking about the developments expanding. Why wouldn't we consider it now instead of creating a problem and only exacerbating that problem?
I think that what we're creating, what this would be creating is those eastern and southern future access points to get to Kemp Road, should those lands develop.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think one consideration here, I don't know if that helps address, but what, what Randy's saying is that if you added cul-de-sacs at those, what, east and, and, is it east and west, I think, or east and south? If those were cul-de-sacked, then I would say you're really not in keeping with what is being suggested in the plan, because, because you are sort of blocking those, that, you know, precluding it from going further. But, and again, this is in a, a impact fee, so it would be up to the city to put the road in. And that'll come from impact fee money and general funds.
But before that's done, is not, is there not some type of a traffic study that's conducted to determine whether that's even viable or necessary?
Oh, yes. Yeah. And I think, I think they're going to have to, when they get the specific site plan, they're going to have to determine what the impact of these 55 homes will be on the, on the roads that they have going out.
To Grange Hall.
To Grange Hall. I mean, if, if, if it were to, the city engineer can address this, but if there was a warrant required for a traffic light, if that's what the study shows, then something would have to be done.
I guess, to be honest with you, what I really struggle with is we sit here in the zoning phase, and we talk about density, and we discuss how much density we want to put in here, but how can we make that decision and that determination if we don't have a traffic study to tell us what that density needs to be? It's just a struggle that I'm having here, and I'm not.
Who determines when these traffic studies are held? Is that something the city can determine, or is that determined by?
It's in a city regulation, but it'd be under the specific site plan.
Typically, we would wait for the specific site plan, because in a typical concept plan, we wouldn't show.
Yeah, and that's, that's right.
All these lots.
All right, and that's what you were getting at the end of your presentation earlier, is where we are in the process.
Right. And so we wouldn't.
Yeah. I mean, and that's important, what Randy's saying is that, is that, on the one hand, the developer has provided, provided counsel more information with, with a layout. On the other hand, really, under our code, it could be just rezoned.
I, I get that. I don't care if these lots are here or not, Steve, it doesn't matter, the, the lots don't mean anything to me, except for I can get a generalized concept, I'm no architect or engineer, but I can get a generalized idea of how many dwelling units we can fit per acre based upon the density. Up to three, at least, in accordance with the zoning code. And so what I really have a hard time wrapping my mind around is how can we select a density if we don't know what the impact to the traffic is going to be? And now we're, I'm just.
But remember.
I'm sorry, I'm really confused. Are we picking density tonight? I thought we were just rezoning tonight.
Density is part of rezoning.
Density is part of, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Within our 3.01.
But this specific site plan design would be the second phase.
Correct.
All right.
But, but remember, the Ohio Supreme Court has made it very clear, traffic is this going to be the city's problem, and in this particular situation, because you're in a traffic impact zone, it really is the city's problem. So if this, if this study comes through and says there needs to be significant increases on Grange Hall, that's the city. But, but it's highly unlikely, and again, not a traffic engineer, but having heard the number, it's very unlikely that 55 itself is going to tip it into that. It's going to be an issue indicative of other issues. There's too much traffic currently.
Well, I.
Arguably, from what, what people are saying, but.
There is, and I guess that's my concern, is I, I've been in the Garden View plot, I've tried to get out of the Garden View plot, turning left at any time of the day, and it's sometimes next to impossible.
That's right.
There were deadly accidents in that, in that intersection. And I don't know if the answer, I mean, I know that that's going into the specific site plan, but is it, we don't connect, but then we're overloading the other neighborhoods? I just, I'm really struggling with this a lot, and I'm trying to find a, I'm trying to find out what our guide rails are in terms of the rezoning, and what we can and can't do, and what we can and can't consider. Apparently, my time is up. With that, I meant to start by thanking the residents. Truly, you came incredibly prepared. The room is full. I have received a multitude of emails, and unlike Councilmember Doerr, I have not been able to respond to them all, and so I admire you for that, and I apologize for not doing so. I do hear your concerns, I truly do, and I'm really struggling here myself on, on the way and the direction in order to not get the city involved in substantial litigation, but also recognizing the interest of the residents and the concerns that were raised here today. I think that's all I have for right now. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Bales.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm probably going to continue on your trend.
Please do.
But first, I do want to thank you all for coming out. I think that I've received nearly 100 emails, which is a, which is a testament to the passion that we've heard, and I do appreciate it. I empathize with everybody. I don't always agree with everybody, but that's okay. I think I'll start my questions based on where Counsel Ms. Schwartz left off, and it is with the VPA. Because it says in the VPA that any large-scale residential development must include or be contingent upon roadway improvements, but because of the location, you find it unfeasible, my question really becomes, when does it become feasible? And why is this developer let off the hook when the next one may not be for connecting to Kemp Road?
Yeah, I mean.
If that makes sense.
No, I, I get what you're saying, or asking. Really, I mean, we're talking, I may get the distances here, but from this property, it's 1,800 feet to Kemp Road. And so to build 1,800 plus whatever it would take to get around the existing neighborhood for 55 homes, I wouldn't call this a large-scale development, so that's why we're saying that we require those connections on the east and to the south, so that when, if and when the neighborhood, or the vacant lots of the west develops, that we could continue that road getting closer to Kemp Road, and ultimately connecting it, depending on the scale of that next development.
I understand that. I just think that the, the verbiage in the VPA just doesn't really make sense, because it's going to piecemeal itself up to Kemp Road, and there's nothing we're going to be able to do about it. I mean, he's got a, this developer has a stub street in the plan, as it's written now. The next one will, and the next one will, and the next one will, and eventually, he'll get there. But it doesn't alleviate any concerns today, or probably for the next decade of development.
Until they sell.
If they sell, ever, right. I mean, so it, from our seat, it's very frustrating when the intent is right, the intent of the VPA, but the practical solution doesn't make any sense. And I think that's where we're seeing frustrations, because you only have two ways in, or, you know, two ways out, and it's not practical any other way. With that said, I do believe in property owner rights, and so, I mean, I believe that the current property owner obviously has chosen to sell. I'm sorry, didn't take you up on your first right of refusal there and so forth, so I mean, I, I do believe that, you know, this developer has the right to buy and, and develop and so forth, as long as it complies with, with zoning, which we're dealing with tonight. Which I guess leads into my second question, about the 50-foot, what are we calling it? Buffer?
Yeah.
The zoning code requires us, and correct me if I'm wrong, right, to match the lot sizes of adjacent development.
Any new lot that directly abuts an existing lot.
So what authority do you have or to even suggest that 50-foot buffer negates that requirement?
We're looking at the verbiage itself, and it says if it directly abuts it, then it has to be, and they proposed this green space, and it didn't directly abut it. Now, originally.
That's, so that came from the planning department, that came from, okay, the developer says, it doesn't directly abut it because we're, we're going to leave X amount of feet separated. And so that got around the zoning code requirement?
When they first proposed the 30 feet, you know, we thought this is, it's too small, 50 feet makes more sense in terms of how we would buffer even a commercial with a residential property. I mean, we found that an adequate buffer between residential and non-residential. And building on what the residents at Bridlewood stated they would rather have, kind of felt that this, it meets the stringent reading of the code, because the new lots wouldn't directly abut the existing lots, while it would still provide a perpetual 50-foot buffer of green, wooded green space between the existing neighborhood and the new neighborhood.
So from a, does our legal counsel feel that that's substantial enough? Or does that hold water? I mean, it's, the, the property, as we see it here, butts up to the existing property. Whether they set back property lines at, I mean, they haven't done that yet, they haven't.
I mean, you certainly can look at that further, but, but I think literally under the code, and, and I guess one of the concerns is, is if that's not there, there have been issues with the 50-foot, you know, then it gets incorporated into lots, and where all that ends, I'm not sure. You may end up with pretty close to the same number of lots, but with people backing things right up to the property line, I think that's one of the, one of the scenarios you have here, you know?
That's a good question.
Because I think they're over, I think they're over probably the requirement for open space with all the.
Again, this is the.
I would imagine they are, and I mean, again, the density is, the density is much lower than.
Yeah.
R1A, I mean, it's, I don't really have any problem with the, the site plan, but it's the specifics of the, how we got to it.
Yeah.
That kind of rubbed me the wrong way.
Do you mind if I ask a question?
No, go ahead.
So in regards to that, so are we saying, are we saying that we would have to, okay, so if we're going by the compatible property, so now we're saying they're not abutting, but let's, when is that determination made?
Well, that's my, that was my question, on what authority, where did you have that in, do you have that in writing, if it's more than 50 feet or more than 25 feet?
Well, no, I mean, when is the determination made for this, for, is that considered a setback, or the matching of the adjacent properties? So, you know, the zoning code says they have to abut, so what if in this zoning phase, we go through and we say there's the 50-foot buffer, and then in the, in the reza, or in the specific site plan, we come back and say, oh, you got to match the compatible properties now? Can we do that?
There were, there were the, what, four homes? If I count it correctly?
Yeah, I was trying, I can't.
Off the top of my head.
Four homes? I mean, just counting, sorry. If I do count it, that's how we do it, right?
Yeah, I'm trying.
It's hard to say the exact number that David was.
An amendment to, to section two of the, what is it, section five, we just, if you were to remove the requirement for the, in lieu of the 50-foot, what would that do to the, that would mean that all the lots along that first road, or there'd be a redesign, I understand that. That would kind of change exactly what we're all talking about here, right? It would do away with that required, that, that, that guess. It would do away with that required, that guess, if you see why, if you see why I'm reading.
But it's, it's kind of, it's arbitrary.
But then you'd go back to a 35-foot setback, is that right?
If they did 20,000 square foot lots, there is no setback.
There is no setback.
There would be a 35-foot setback.
The building setback would be, but no, I mean, they could, they could put a fence right on the property line. They could put the sheds within 10 feet of the adjacent property line.
Right.
So, you would either get a 50-foot buffer-
But you would also have a half-acre lot.
But you'd also get a 50-foot buffer with the set amount of homes up here, or you would get no buffer, a 35-foot structure setback.
Yeah.
You might get a few less.
And you'd only lose maybe four or five homes.
Only four or five? Those are-
Unless I could, if I counted wrong.
I couldn't tell you. I could probably tell you by the second reading.
I think that the, I got you. But kind of like somebody mentioned, the-
If you want to make a guess.
Car before the horse, you know? I mean-
Yeah, it would be more than five lots you would lose.
Yeah, it'd be more than five, for sure, because I think those are like, those are
Yeah, like point two.
Quarter acre, a little less than quarter acre lots.
Smaller than quarter acre, yeah.
Yeah, they're like point, what is that, a 60 by?
130.
90?
130 is the lot depth. 130 feet is the minimum.
130?
Yeah. And so, I'll walk through this just from a developer perspective. So, and I'm happy to say all these in public meeting, but the development costs have gone up significantly in the last five, six years. So, to develop a 60-foot lot about five or six years ago, you were under $1,000 of linear foot. So, you were under a $60,000 lot. These lots will cost at least $90,000 each to develop a 60-foot lot. And so, if we, and rule of thumb is the lot cost is about 20% of the end cost of the home, so 90,000 times five is $450,000 minimum. If these were 100-foot lots, that 100-foot lot would cost $150,000, and that average sale price would be $750,000. And it would have a worse impact on the neighboring community. It would be less lots, sure, but there'd be no, very little open space, as little as possible, because you wouldn't have to have it pursuant to R1, and you would have 750, 800,000-dollar homes next to 250,000-dollar homes. Now, we would love to build 250,000-dollar homes. It's just not possible with the development costs these days. So, that's the reason for the 60-foot lots, is people don't care as much about lot sizes they used to, and if you want to get a home in a quote-unquote affordable price range in the 400s, a lot size is where you do it.
Well, I think you bring up a pretty good point, being that going the PUD route, we have been able to work with you so far to come up with 55 homes and a density of 2.25 compared to straight zoning, which is, would be 70 homes on that site, or whatever.
Yeah, whatever could fit. And to Mr. Curran's point earlier, he had said-
Let me backtrack here. I'd ask you the reduction in the density.
Yes, thank you. So, we had talked about putting a condition of 55 homes. It will probably be less than that. I've never gained a lot during the engineering phase. We always lose lots during development phase, so a few lots will be lost. One point Mr. Bales made about the lot where the cell tower access cuts through, there's a good chance we might lose that lot, because if we can't create access for the cell tower, then that lot has to go away. So, those are things that almost always happen during the engineering process. So, the max density of 2.25 and max number 55, it's going to be lower than that by at least a couple. Just, it's just inevitable in the engineering process. If you've got to increase the size of a stormwater, you have to relocate a street to hit an engineering requirement of the city, you lose a lot here, you lose a lot there. It's just inevitable.
I have a few more questions.
Sure.
May not be for you. The, this is, on Bayview, that is a sewage lift station, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we've gotten, like I said, hundreds of emails and even a couple comments here tonight that talk about stormwater lift station. That, that lift station has nothing to do with stormwater.
Sewage.
So-
And I've never seen one placed in the middle of a street light.
Yeah, yeah. It's very interesting. Can you please refresh my memory and restate your intention with regard to that lift station?
Yeah, so that lift station is, I'm pretty sure about this, again, not an engineer, pumping sewage up nor up, because the elevation is not high enough for it to gravity feed. And so, if we can make that connection, both with the street and with the stormwater and with the sewage and with the water connect through there, for sewage, it would then gravity flow south, and that lift station would no longer be needed to pump it back north.
Okay, so your intention at this point is to demolish that lift station?
Have it removed by the city. Well, remove it with, in coordination with the city, and I'm-
Excuse me. Green County.
Green County. Yes, thank you.
The city's not going to spend a penny on that.
And, and the county probably isn't either. It's going to be us, but what happens with that lift station, I don't know, because I've never seen one removed. But, yeah, from a sewage flow perspective, it would gravity feed south through that connection, which was not there previously. There was no ability.
So, once you create your sewer system, sanitary sewer, and connect it with the Bayview terminus-
Yeah.
Then presumably, and it's your hope, that it will eliminate the need for that lift station?
It will, yes, yeah.
Okay. And at that point, then you will have negotiations, discussions with Green County on how to get rid of it?
Yeah.
You already have?
Yeah, about easements to connect to gravity sewer, correct?
Okay.
Yeah, we don't, we don't build on communities that are on septic. They're all on gravity sewer, so, yeah, it's a must for a subdivision.
Okay. That's all I have for you. Thank you.
Thanks.
I, to the residents, I don't like paying more taxes either. I mean, my tax bill has gone up as well. However, I am kind of shocked at the number of emails we've gotten complaining about the rise in property values, because typically, that's a good thing for all of us in the end, but I sympathize. No one likes to pay more taxes. Mr. Mormon? Do you have any factual proven data that would provide concern for traffic conditions based on 55 more homes here?
Sure, the best I could offer is, you know, the basis for the traffic impact fee is there was a study that was done where we took all these vacant planning areas, and we said, okay, if these areas get built out 100%, what's the traffic impact on the city's roadway network? This was included, obviously, in that study, and when we ran those numbers, it didn't really show any big impacts in the relatively local neighborhood network. We're seeing a need to increase Grinch Hall Road, the portion from Kemp to Pentagon, when everything's 100% and built out, to five lanes. For what it's worth, right now, it's wide enough for four lanes if you get rid of the bikeways. So, we'd be looking at a future project to add a center turn lane along that piece of Grinch Hall Road at some point. And again, those projects, the outcome of that study is the basis for the impact fee. That's how we equate everything back to the price per lot.
Okay. So, it's, it's safe, it's fair to say that 55 homes won't have an immediate impact on Grinch Hall, other than the fact that it's already highly traveled and-
Sure, and they would be paying into that fund also that would be used someday to construct those improvements.
Yeah, okay, okay. Thank you. And then, Randy, I guess, well, it might not be my last thing. I'm sorry, counsel. Mr. Trout brought up the point that we have 30-foot front setback and 35-back setback, and maybe it's just a, and then on this map here, there was referenced 25 front and rear setbacks. Is that just a, can you comment on that? Do you have any? I mean, maybe it's the developer that needs to comment?
The verbiage and the conditions trump anything shown on the plan.
Okay, so just so, so Mr. Trout's aware that the map is not the correct. It doesn't, doesn't go-
It wouldn't, yeah. The verbiage overrules.
How about a, we received a comment from, I believe, Mr. Courier, I think, that said he didn't get noticed about this hearing or the previous one, and he lives on Windover. Can you talk about who and how you send notices?
The zoning code states that we select whatever properties would be in consideration, and then do a buffer on the Green County GIS website of everybody within 500 feet. Everybody's who properties line who touches within 500 feet of this property, and that's who we send notice to.
Okay, so-
Some people might live further than they think they do.
I don't know. Seems like everybody on Windover should be within 500 feet. I can't remember how it curves, how it, how it goes, but-
Yeah, I mean, it's just, yeah, sometimes-
Okay, so everybody within 500 feet of the project, of the whole property boundary?
Gets a letter.
I think that's all. I guess I just encourage you to start thinking about construction traffic if this moves forward. As someone who's living right next to a brand-new housing development that's being built today, construction traffic is a real thing. And being two neighborhood roads, I just really feel like that's super challenging. I mean, I don't think it's a basis to deny a zoning application, you know what I mean? But it's, it is a pain in the neck. So, I encourage you and engineer to start thinking about how to potentially handle that. That's all.
Thank you very much. I guess one of the advantages or disadvantages of going last is all the questions have been asked. I do have one quick question on this 50-foot buffer that we're talking about. What will be in that? What will it?
When we get to this, the specific site plan stage, we'll just, we'll call it, we'll just require that you remain as the trees and the landscaping.
Okay, so there's trees there now?
Yeah, I mean-
I don't know. I haven't looked at that.
There are trees, but I mean, it's not a forest by any means, so I mean, you could use some supplemental.
Most of my questions have to do with a specific site plan, because I think all the other things have been answered, but, and I do, will have several for that, but, and then that's all for you. Thank you. There was one thing-
Oh, Mayor, on that 50-foot too, because it will have to be in the HOA, and those HOA documents are, will be approved by the city, because we always approve them, and, you know, it's going, that's where the devil's in the detail, shall we say, of the specifics that the people live along there, they can't take the land over. It's going to be protected land. That's the point of it, so, anyway.
Thank you. And I had one other thing that I wanted to address that came up about the property taxes. The city is really not going to get much out of this if they build it, because we work on a fixed levy. The more homes you put in, the effective rate goes down. So, all those things you talked about where it went up last year for everybody, and mine went up too, no question, the city realized 1.75% had increased. That was all on new buildings. Didn't even cover inflation. So, when we put one of these things in, and we don't go out and recruit, or look for these, we don't go out, we didn't go to them and say, come and build here. We don't do that. They come to us. Most of them cost us money, because we have the police that have to patrol them, we have the streets that have to take care of them with snowplows and things like that. So, most of them do cost us money. So, we're not really gaining, as some people said in the emails to me, all this money, because we don't get that. So, and it's all in our, you can see how we're funded. I think it's on our website, Mr. Landrum.
Yes, I would encourage any residents. We had a couple town halls last year. Last August is a recording of a financial town hall. You need to know how you're funded, why you're funded. Don't listen to rumors. Check it out. It's on YouTube channel, City of Beaver Creek YouTube channel. Look for August, it's a town hall, and it's the financial status of Beaver Creek, which would explain all of this plus more. So, if you have any questions on that, please call us.
With that, I don't have anything else, and we are at the zoning portion. We're not a specific site plan, so we're not getting into that. So, one of the things we do vote here, it will be on the, move it. We'll move it to a second reading. It will be only on the zoning issue.
So, just for clarification, this moves it to a second reading?
Yes.
This is not approval?
No.
It provides us the opportunity to think more and ask more questions.
Correct.
Thank you, Mayor.
So, I will entertain a motion.
We have to modify the motion to include the tenth condition? My microphone is on.
Mine wasn't.
I would do that.
His was on.
Yes.
Okay, so you will do that, so?
Well, no, no, I would make a motion. I would, yes, if there's going to be a, well, one, if somebody makes a motion, I think there should be a, amend a motion to amend that motion to add condition number 10.
That would be, no more than 55, that would be correct.
Or make a motion to move it on to second with a 10th condition, and then we will add that condition in there that require no more than 55 homes.
And then, Counselor, if we, if we chose at the second reading to modify a condition by condition number five, or talks about that 50-foot buffer and things like that, is-
But under the charter, it's very likely it'll go on to another-
A third reading?
Yes, exactly. Yeah, it starts back, you know? Because doing that would have significant implication on, I mean, effectively have to redesign things.
Well, all right. I'll make a motion to amend ordinance 25-02 to add condition 10, requiring a maximum of 55 homes.
You have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to amend this to include the condition number 10. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Okay, now, we can go with the amended.
I'll motion to move ordinance 25-02 as amended to a second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move this to a second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bales?
Aye, yes.
Councilmember Liddell?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yeah.
Councilmember Kern?
No.
Councilmember Duer?
No.
Councilmember Garcia?
No.
Mayor Adams?
Yes.
Quarterhead.
So, we'll move it to the second reading, and then we've got a lot more questions to ask at that point. Okay, next up, public hearing on the Valvoline rezoning.
PUD 25-2, an application filed by McBride, Dale, Clarion, 50-
PUD 25-2, an application filed by McBride Dale Clarion, 5721 Dragon Way, Suite 300, Cincinnati. The application-
Hold up, just a minute. Oh, no, no, go, you need to go. You gotta take care of that, it's family. Yeah, no, it's family, take care of it.
Okay, Valvoline.
Case number PUD 25-2, an application filed by McBride Dale Clarion, 5720 Way Dragon Way, Suite 300, Cincinnati, Ohio. The application requests approval to rezone .65 acres from B2 Community Business District to CPUD, PUD Commercial Planned Unit Development. The property is located at 3913 Colonel Glenn Highway, further described as Book One, Page Nine, Parcel 45, on the Green County Property Tax Atlas. Ordinance number 25-07, an ordinance rezoning .65 acres from B2 Community Business, further described as Book One, Page Nine, Parcel 45, on the property tax maps of Green County, Ohio, to CPUD 25-2, Commercial Planned Unit Development, PUD 25-2.
Do we have an applicant here?
Good evening, thank you for your time. My name is Jonathan Woker. My address is 5721 Dragon Way, Suite 300, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45227. I'm a planner with McBride Dale Clarion. I'm here representing Commercial Site Acquisitions, which is also Casto Development, and we are requesting a PUD approval for 90, I'm sorry, 3913 Colonel Glenn Highway. This is property that's on the south side of Colonel Glenn Highway and north of Germany Lane. I do have a brief presentation, I know you've been through a lot already this evening. This is an aerial that shows the property. Casto has a contract to purchase 0.65 acres. It's currently zoned B2 Business District, currently has a beverage drive-through and a vehicle lot on the property, and as you can see, we do have frontage on both Colonel Glenn and on Germany, we're just west of Zink Lane. We are requesting approval for a commercial PUD for this development. This is our proposed plan. This is for a proposed Valvoline instant oil change facility. We propose to have a two-bay Valvoline instant oil, there will be six stacking spaces, nine parking spaces are proposed. I know this is a concept plan, but this is what we intend to bring back for final plan as well, and you can see we have a driveway on Colonel Glenn and one on Germany, actually reducing the number of curb cuts, and this plan actually increases the proposed green space for this project. This is an elevation that shows what we intend to build, we believe we meet the city's requirements for architecture, we have quality building materials on this project. This PUD will allow redevelopment of the property, we think it's going to be an improvement over existing conditions. We did submit a detailed analysis of the proposed vehicle stacking, and that's based on specific data that was presented by the Valvoline team, based on the Dayton market, and we'll be talking about that more in specific site plan, but we're confident that we meet the city's standards. Staff has recommended approval, and we are agreeable to the conditions that are in the proposed resolution. Planning Commission also recommended approval. We would request your approval as well, and I have other members of our team here that are ready to respond to questions if you have them, so, again, appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. We may have some questions after the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor.
Staff?
Good thing, sir. Good evening, State Council, my name is Colin Carvall, I'm the city planner here. And we are here today for PUD 25-2. They are requesting a change from the existing, the existing .65 acres, which is presently zoned B2 Community Business, to CPUD, Commercial Planned Unit Development, in order to construct a Valvoline oil change. So similarly to our last rezoning case, we're in the same, kind of same process here, we're at the first reading here at City Council. They did receive a approval at the Planning Commission level, a positive recommendation, and we're here specifically to determine kind of the specific uses for the property, as well as some of the conditions outlined in my, in my staff report. Phase two of this will determine kind of the site plan, architected, things like that. So a lot of what was presented will be discussed on kind of the second run-through, but happy to discuss kind of the specific uses here tonight. Just to get your bearings here, we're working in the northwest part of the city, as indicated by that northern star on the screen, that southern star is where we're here at this evening. That's another look at the lot, that was already previously shared, and here's just a look at our zoning map here. As you can see, that whole stretch is zone B2, and obviously this would, this would be a little bit of a change to the area, but overall captures the, kind of the same, same, I guess, preference for that area. So the proposed uses will be permitted, conditional and accessory uses in B4 Highway Business. We categorize an instant oil change as a repair station minor, that's not permitted in B2, that would be permitted in B4, which is part of the reason for this rezoning. We've also indicated 32 various uses found in the B4 Highway Business zoning district that we deemed incompatible with that lot. We came to that conclusion simply because, just of the lot size, a lot of the uses outlined in there just didn't seem compatible, so we decided to strike those, so that's indicated in one of your exhibits here this evening. Our land use plan, it's calls for regional commercial office, some key components to that, it provides a full range of variety of aspects of commercial activity, it's located near major department stores, obviously we're near the North Fairfield Mall, it has a typical market, the uses have a typical market area spanning a multi-county metropolitan region, also fits that definition, and it offers a broad spectrum of shopping goods and services. We all need oil changes, I think it's probably good for the, good for the area there. Staff believes that the station aligns with the areas intended purposes, and like previously mentioned, being situated near that Mall of Fairfield Commons and right past, right pat Air Force Base, it would be a good location for that. Not to mention, we believe, we strongly believe it would be just a nice facelift to that, a kind of small stretch there as well. It may lead to maybe some more future, future development on that kind of strip there to, you know, it can be a little, with these car lots, it can be a little jumbled at times, and this I think would add, would be a first step in adding some, a little more orderly structure there. So definitely pleased with, with what they're currently proposing, obviously we'll work through that, the site plan stage, but, and this is obviously subject to change, but as Jonathan mentioned, this is kind of their intentions moving forward, so it's good to get a first look at this now. So staff is recommending approval, subject to the six conditions in the approved resolution and in the ordinance here, and happy to discuss any questions after the public hearing. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing, so if anyone would like to speak to this issue, please come forward, state your name and address, and you have three minutes. Seeing none, I will close the public portion. Counsel, start over here with Councilman Kern.
No comment, Your Honor.
Councilman Schwartz?
I just agree with some of the sentiments that were made, I think this is going to be a good facelift for this corner. I don't foresee any issues with the stacking, I think that that bottom road there is rarely traveled in the event that that were to happen. Just excited to see development in that area, and a facelift. Thanks.
Councilman Littler. I thank you for the presentation, I concur. Actually, I think it's an outstanding location with rear exit and front exit or enter, it's probably be one of the best-located Valvolines I think around, so, I, I have no, no questions for anybody.
Councilman Duer.
Thank you, Mayor. Two comments, two questions. One is that, I guess I beg to differ, I think it fits very nicely, you have automotive, automotive, and so it fits very, very well, and I agree, it's a nice improvement to the area as well, but it fits already very, very nicely. Comment two is, I'll play my cards, I like Valvoline, I go to Valvoline, North Fairfield and Dayton Xenia, I think your men and women do a terrific job, I think they're really very, very good, and you do need a second location, because question number one is, I have been car number, stacked number six. And so, I, would you consider addressing, just, I know it's, it's an early stage, but I, I've seen Valvoline, you're very popular, and it does back up, so it gives me some level of caution.
Jonathan Woker, again, I referenced that Valvoline did a very detailed analysis of that, and you're right, that there are certain times of the day where it can be, you know, a stacking issue. We think, we're showing six here, we think there's a little bit more room for that, and I think an important part of this design is that we want to make sure that our customers have the ability to decide it if that's too long for them to wait, and I think that by having this second location, it will relieve some of the congestion that you're seeing at that location, but we've been working pretty closely with, with your staff, and when we get an opportunity, I think we'll show that the stacking numbers do work, but yeah, we, we think this is going to be a good complementary to the existing location.
Sure, thank you. So relatedly, question two, why not three bays?
Well, I think that's a market decision, we have an option, if you look at our plan, we probably can add a third bay, but I think at this point, we think two is the right number, but, I have, I have representatives here who are listening, and they will take your comments into consideration.
It's a good business, you do-
Get there at 7:00 AM.
But, but here's the thing, I have been there at 7:00 AM.
Really? And there's a line?
Usually I'm first, because I'm an, I'm an early bird, right? But by 7:20, it's four deep. Been there, done that, seen it, been honked at, because I'm, you know, getting my car up here, not really, people are friendly, but it's, you know, it does, it does back up, so, Valvoline is popular in Beaver Creek, there are others, Riverside just added Five Minute Oil, there's one down by the Green, it's, there's definitely a demand, but it can be popular, and even off times.
Noted, appreciate the comment.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Garcia.
Just thank you for your continued development and interest in Beaver Creek, appreciate it.
Vice Mayor Bales.
Thank you. Mr. Woker, I appreciate you and your team coming up and sitting through our last issue that we dealt with. I have no issue with this, this ordinance, it does mark an interesting end to a drive-through that's been there for as long as I can remember, one of our high school hangouts and drive- it's kind of like when W.O. Wright's went away, but, anyway, time moves on and so does the city, and so I appreciate your reinvestment, that's all.
Thank you very much, and I really don't have much. Thank you guys for coming up and spending the time with us. I know this is site, specific site plan, this, that's coming down the road, but on Colonel Glenn, is it going to be out, right, and left, or?
We're proposing a full access on Colonel Glenn, you know, Randy's teams advised us that we need to work with the staff on that, we think we can justify that full access, but we're obviously going to work with you on that.
Okay, because I, I know that's down the road, but this is just zoning, but that's something to really consider, because that's a fairly heavily traveled street.
Yeah, and I think as, as discussed, having that second access, it really does provide a nice, nice flow, but we, we think we can justify the full access, but that's work we'll have to do with you.
Okay, very good. I don't have anything else, I have a motion to move it to second reading?
Mayor, I move ordinance 25-07 to a second reading.
I have a motion and a second to move ordinance 25-07 to a second reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs, Resolution 25-07.
Resolution 25-07, a resolution to authorize the city manager to enter into a master supply agreement for all services related to supplying the electric requirements for the city's electric aggregation program.
Mr. Mayor, I have Daniel Dieters here from Energy Alliances, he is our liaison with our aggregation program, as Energy Alliances has been ever since we've started. We have, right now, we're covered on, I believe, prices through our meter reading in August, I believe?
It'll be your August.
So maybe through-
It'll be your August bill.
Okay, this would maybe start our August bill.
Yeah.
So it is that time again that we do bids and do pricing, and he's here to deliver the bad news on pricing.
Well, I'll start with good news.
Start with good news.
So since the inception of the program, we saved 17 million plus for the residents of Beaver Creek, that was 2018, it's about 1,500 bucks a resident per account, so it's, it's been a pretty good program. Unfortunately, right now, prices of capacity, which is basically generation capacity, is the fee we all pay to make sure you have enough energy on the grid, and energy is a little bit more expensive than the last time we did this, but capacity is about 350% more. So if we paid, I can't remember the last price, I've been to a lot of meetings in the last couple of weeks.
Seven, seven something.
Yeah, 71, I think, something like that, so, that had about nine tenths of a cent of capacity in it, this time through, it's going to have almost three cents of capacity. So Beaver Creek's price is going to go up, but the utilities' price is going to go up too. The goal is, since it's very difficult to come back and offer a contract to you on a meeting night, that we, first of all, all the energy companies cut their contracts off at 5:00 o'clock. Two weeks ago, we had a contract go out to a, to a township at noon, and at 12:10, they pulled the pricing, because energy is so volatile right now. So we're asking you to give Mr. Landrum the ability to sign one of these contracts within certain parameters, we would recommend. This is, this is pretty simple, you can't shut down all kinds of generation facilities and not replace them with anything, and then add more demand and expect the price to go down. That's what's going on in Ohio. They're shutting down coal plants, they've shut down some gas plants, and then nothing's taking its place, so obviously there's a, a lot of demand and much less supply, so if you look at the last page, this is the numbers we got a couple of weeks ago, like I said, we're going to have to figure out term, I think it's only going to be a year, because we want to see what the country's energy policy is going to do, so I think for us to recommend anything beyond that is, is not as conservative as we'd like to be, we want to make sure that, that, you know, we've had, we have communities that we cannot help right now, and they're going back to Duke in Cincinnati. So, I mean, my, my wife hates that, because I don't make any money when that happens, but, but the fact is, it's the right thing to do for the community. If we can't beat Duke's price, or if we can't beat AEP's price, there's no reason to continue the program, we come back when we continue the program. In '22, '23, we sent 19 communities back to the utility, waited about six or seven months, picked them all back up, and they saved tons of money, and we took advantage of that little dip that we couldn't beat with the utility. So that's the plan right now, is to come up with something that we can beat the utility with. Now, things in our favor right now are, we don't have to sign anything until probably the second week of June, is the drop-dead date, and we're going to see both auctions come back from the utility, and we're going to know what the utility's price is before he signs anything. So it's not like we're going to be, this isn't guesswork any longer. So it's not like we're going to be, this isn't guesswork any longer. This is, this is, we're going to have a real number. And, you know, if it's, if the utility comes back at 10:05, and we got something in 9:07, we're going to say, you know, you might as well sign it. It's going to save you money. So, but if it's, but if it's inverted, we're going to say, go back to the utility, and we'll pick it back up as soon as we can find a good price for you.
So that's specified in a legislation that we modified that gives me some flexibility on that pricing through the time that we have. Also, too, if there's a, it allows that I could extend the time, not beyond. We would never do that if it wasn't a very good price. But if it, you know, six months from now, say we sign something mid-June, come October, November, the price just plummets. He's going to advise me, pick it up, and we'll extend the timeframe. It'll be a mesh of a price, but it's worth doing. Then we may, you know, pick up that price, new price, and have to extend it by 12 months or something like that.
Yeah, if the market, if the bottom would fall to the market. Now, this price isn't going to change from the utility until May 26. Okay, so it's a pretty safe bet, what, you know, when we get pricing back in the next couple of weeks. But if, if come September, if, like Mr. Landrum said, if the market, if the floor drops out, that's not going to prohibit us from saying, okay, we're going to either do one of two things. We're going to tack on this really new good rate for a new year extension. Or what we've done before with some communities is we go back in and blend that rate in with the rest of the current contract, and drop the rate immediately, and then extend it. So we've done that with a lot of communities in the past when we see these kinds of market volatility.
And so that's just kind of what the authority, and I communicate to you all, but it is just that. We, it is no different than your gasoline. You, it's $2.99, and next thing you know, it's $3.49, and you just were there five minutes ago, and there's nothing you can do. Now, you can wait and wait, and hopefully it drops, and sometimes it does. But it's that volatile volatility that, like he said, if he got a good price, you know, on the phone at 4 o'clock, they could have withdrawn it by the time this meet, before this legislation passed, and I could sign it. So common in this marketplace to do so.
Very common. And it's, I mean, we've, we, they do not, they no longer, it used to be, when we start, back even in '18, when we started, and I worked with Pete in another community, we, you know, we essentially, we had four, five, six days to get a, get a contract signed. Now, we don't have four hours, much less four days.
Yeah, and I know they keep going back, asking for increases almost weekly.
Well, that's delivery, and that's a part of the bill that we all pay. And, you know, this is the good part about, about this city council, is people can come up and talk to you. I try to get a meeting at the PUCO if you're a regular rate payer. It's not going to happen.
Any questions?
Well, I think this is generally a very popular program, and I've always appreciated your honesty. You've just, you always shoot straight, whether it's, you know, good or bad. But there are just times when you've left it, and I've really appreciated that. So thank you very much, and this is helpful.
Yeah, just to confirm, this is an opt-out program?
It's always, all of the programs that we run are opt-out programs, which means we, everybody's generally in. There are exemptions, of course, exceptions, of course. But all of our programs, for no fee, you can leave at any time, and you can come back at any time. So even though you may be put in the program, and if you don't want to be in an aggregation program, you just go to the PUCO, and you can fill out your name on the do-not-aggregate list, and you'll never hear from an aggregator again. But you'll hear from the guys that call your cell phone.
Or knock on your door.
From wherever they call from. Knock on the door, yeah.
Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 25-07.
Second.
I have a motion to approve Resolution 25-07. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Get us a good price.
Thanks, I'll do my best.
All right.
Ordinance 25-06.
Ordinance 25-06, an ordinance to vacate a portion of public right-of-way of Eastside Drive upon application of the owners of property abutting the same right-of-way.
Mr. Mormon.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of city council. As you know, Eastside Drive is along the south side of Curring Glen Highway to the west of the Grange Hall Road National Intersection. Right now, the existing roadway, about 200 feet of it, is constructed to city standards and provides the main access to the office building. You see there to the, to the right of Eastside Drive. There is a minor extension planned with Eastside Drive, about 50 additional feet to be built to city standards. And that'll serve to access the new parking lot for the new office development, currently under construction to the west of Eastside Drive. As a part of that development, the, I've received a petition requesting the vacation of the portion of Eastside Drive, showing hash on the drawing. I should note, all the surrounding property owners signed that petition, requesting the vacation. Upon receiving that request, we analyzed the impacts of that, and we're in favor of the vacation, that piece of right-of-way. Kind of the way we see it is, the land to the south is, the topography is very, very rough. Additional development on the south looks very unlikely. There's a big channel that runs through there. The terrain's pretty rough, so building something down on the south side probably isn't, isn't too likely. Extending the roadway isn't likely either, because of the existing uses out there. And again, the topography kind of would prevent that. Lastly, it'll help the office development, currently under construction on the west side. The site, they have some pretty difficult terrain, and it'll help them with the grading of their site if we do this right-of-way vacation. So for those reasons, we're in favor of their petition. And after the public hearing, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. And this is an ordinance, so there is a public hearing on this. If anybody would like to come forward and speak to it, please do so. State your name and address. You have three minutes. Don't everybody jump at once. Seeing none, I'll close the public portion. Counsel, anything?
Your Honor, I move Ordinance 25-06 to the second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move Ordinance 25-06 to a second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Ordinance 25-08.
Ordinance 25-08, an ordinance by the Beaver Creek City Council transferring ownership of approximately 54.5 acres of land situated at Grange Hall Road and Shakertown Road, partial ID numbers B42-3-13-30, and B42-30, excuse me, -3-13-29, to the Beaver Creek Development Corporation for the purpose of promoting economic growth and declaring their property surplus.
Well, Mr. Mayor, that's a good default to me, as Mr. McHugh had suddenly leave, he apologizes for that. The city acquired Stormwater Project that, you guys know, we spent $2.4 million on, the Stormwater Project there along Grange Hall. The legislation, we purchased it from Miami Valley Research Foundation by deed recorded December 27, 2022. And by Resolution 23-39, city council authorized city manager to enter into agreement with the Beaver Creek Development Corporation to market approximately the 54.5 acres of land located at Grange Hall Road and Shakertown Road, that proximity, for the purpose of economic growth and development. With the completion of the Stormwater Project, that was a great project, and thank God it's done, the property has been determined to be a surplus and furtherance of the goals and conditions described in the marketing and sales agreement entered into by the city and the BDC. As authorized by Resolution 23-39, the city will transfer the surplus property to the BDC. The city law director, and as I might as well say myself, too, city manager recommends the city council adopt this legislation.
Okay, this is an ordinance, so there will be public input again. If anyone would like to come and speak to this, please step forward, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. Seeing none, I'll close the public portion of it. Counsel? Input?
Your Honor, I move Ordinance 25-08 to the second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move Ordinance 25-08 to the second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Captain Molnar, you're up.
Liquor permits. Hopefully, these are just routine liquor permits. What I have tonight are two liquor permits, one of which is for a new liquor permit for Blue Wave Seafood &amp; Fo' doing business as Blue Wave Seafood &amp; Fo' at 2733 Fairfield Commons Unit A in Beaver Creek 45431. Upon reception of the request, we required all the background checks necessary. There was no issues or anything, so staff at this point in time does not have any objections. And we recommend that the application request move forward without comment.
Move to accept without comment. Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept without comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
The second one is for a stock transfer from VPC Beaver Creek Pizza LLC doing business as Giordano's and Patio at 2819 Center Drive in Beaver Creek. The current stock ownership is listed as VPC Pizza Operating Corporation, and it will be transferred to VPC Pizza Intermediate LLC. Again, the record checks were completed for the applicants, no concerns. And staff is recommending that this application request to move forward without comment.
Move to accept without comment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept without comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And unless I'm wrong, I think it's counsel time. So we'll start with Councilman Schwartz.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything. I appreciate it.
Councilwoman Garcia.
Just to welcome again to Caroline and Matthew for Beaver Creek Police Department. I know we said again, it's a relatively safe community, and it's very much due to our law enforcement. So I'm grateful that they chose Beaver Creek. Police, law enforcement is very much a calling, not a career, and I'm very grateful that they chose to do it in our city. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Doer.
I want to thank Mrs. Frost at Shore Elementary School for putting together a play about the Wright Brothers, Wright. And it was absolutely fantastic. I want to thank a lot of families that helped, and Pizza Dive that sponsored with pizza. Really was an excellent event. Thank you, Mayor.
I did hear that Wright Brothers, Wright V Flyer III is going to be the official airplane of Ohio.
That's fantastic.
Which is exciting to me, too, because of the Wright brothers. Councilman Luttrell.
I have nothing.
Councilman Kern.
Congratulations to the new police officers, and I'm very, very glad that they're part of our community now. Looking forward to great things. Thank you.
Thank you. I've been busy the last couple of weeks. I won't go all into it, but Councilman Kern and I attended a conversation with counsel at the senior center, went really well. Had a lot of really good questions. I attended an interfaith concert at the high school. We had great choirs and musicians from around the Dayton area. It was really kind of nice to sit back and listen to music. I, too, want to thank and welcome the new police officers. It's really kind of, it's fun to watch a second-generation officer come on board. I've known him for a long time, and to have his son come now and be a police officer here. He told me he didn't have anything to do with that. He chose that on his own, so that's, that's good. I was able to attend the retirement of Gail Mattson, the former executive director of Green County Fish Pantry. They supply food to hundreds of residents and veterans throughout the year. I think last year, they had, like, it was 1.4 million pounds of food that they distributed to people. Would have done more had they had the storage capacity, which they now have with their freezers. Also had the opportunity to attend an event at the Carol Graff Beaver Creek Library with Governor Dewine's wife, Fran. It was the recognition of the 20-millionth book given out in Ohio in the Dolly Parton Imagination Library Program. It's kind of near and dear to my heart, because I have two great-grandkids that are three and four right now. They've been getting it for four years. They get a new book every month. It's really, it's a good, good program, so. And with that, Mr. Landrum.
Actually, Vice Mayor Bales.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I've talked a lot tonight.
That's what it was, you talk too much.
I talk too much. No problem.
I'm sorry.
No problem, Mayor. A good friend of mine does some coaching of youth in the community, and he passed along some information that I told him I would pass on to our community. And it's about the Dayton Track Running Camp, sponsored by the cross-country, Beaver Creek High School Cross Country Team. And he is coaching this camp. It is June 9 through the 12 at Beaver Creek High School for grades K through 8. And more information can be found on their website at DaytonTrackClub.com. So a little plug for a friend of mine and all of those youth runners in the community. Speaking of our youth, and kind of going along with Councilman Doer's conversation about our children, I hope everyone is enjoying their spring break. I know it's needed in my household. So well-deserved spring break to our students and teachers. And I look forward to the weather breaking here soon. The golf course has been a little bit busier lately, so that's a good thing. And I would encourage all those to make your tee times, because once that weather breaks, that golf course is really busy. And finally, a warm welcome to the new officers. I got a chance to attend their swearing-in, and look forward to seeing them out on the streets. Thank you.
Thank you, and I apologize, Vice Mayor Bales. That's the second time I've done that. I did one last year and this year, so I won't do it again this year, so. Now, I think Mr. Landrum.
All right, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Be real brief tonight, just a couple. We have planned the Beaver Creek, planned Beaver Creek. The city has launched a planned Beaver Creek to overhaul the city's land use, zoning code, and property maintenance code to guide future growth and development. This city-selected zone code and OHM advisors follow in competitive bid pricing. And PlannedBeaverCreek.com serves as a project central hub. It is already up and running, and it's accepting feedback and anything else that they've already have loaded onto that website. We do have connections on our website, beavercreekohio.gov, to this, but you can go directly there as well, or go to our website on our homepage and look for Planned Beaver Creek. You can share, residents can share input through the project, through the Engage tab on our website, and also promote open houses, surveys on its website, beavercreekohio.gov, and our social media platforms. I know coming up, our first steering committee meeting will be, I think it's April 1. We're excited to have, I think it's 15, a mix of 15 from residents, businesses, other representation on, on the steering committee, all two council members. So that, again, will help us to plan for the future, but also be legally compliant, which is vitally important, because, you know, we want to make sure we stay within our legal grounds, or we'll find ourselves at the, at the helm or helm of a court that decides for us. And then it doesn't end well, usually. So we want to make sure we stretch to get as far as we can the way Beaver Creek wants to be Beaver Creek, for sure. So this, this also, too, I want to stress, will help us with any weaknesses or areas that, you know, our planning and zoning code has been the same for 40, over 40 years now. And it was morphed, I think we took the township version, and just kept changing throughout the years. And this gives us an opportunity to make sure we, any weaknesses, any new trends or new language that may help protect us, and all those kinds of things. So anyway, although we have a steering committee, there's going to be open houses. There's going to be other ways that residents can communicate and have input on this plan. So we're very excited to bring that forward. Spring House Park Open House is Wednesday, April 2, from 5 to 7, at the Beaver Creek Senior Center, at the Great Room, so come out. We received a $1 million grant. We'll fund ADA accessible playground and entrance drive. We'll fund ADA accessible playground and entrance drive and pave parking lot. Residents will have the opportunity to provide feedback on amenities, view renderings of potential designs and layouts. A survey will be available on the city's website. Safety Town registration, sign up quick. This usually goes quick. Open, Safety Town opens Wednesday, April 9. Class size is limited, sessions will be filled first to come, first served, and exclusively for first-time attendees. A link on the online registration form will be posted to bevercreekohio.gov backslash safetown, and volunteers can apply on the website as well. If this does anything like our camps did, our summer camps filled up very quickly, and so did the junior golf camps, filled up almost immediately. It was just, they were full. So if Safety Town's a popular thing, please get in on that. Part of our, you know, when we started announcing these open houses, this is for better planning, you know, so when I say Kemp Road Project Open House, people think we're going to start construction this year. Usually when we have open houses like that, that means it's probably two years out before we do construction. That's why we got to do the, all the phases that we go through, and one of it's public input on, to have a better improvement and to educate residents on it as well and get their feedback. So Tuesday, April 15, tax day, right? That's still tax day, right? 5:00 to 7:00, so if you've already paid the IRS, then come on out to here, you'll have time, maybe not enough money, but anyway. The city of Beaver Creek, in partnership with Ohio Department of Transportation, is proposing improvements to Kemp Road between Metta Court Drive and Blue Wing Drive. This is kind of the last phase to connect the, to, and painful, yes, painful. I've teased engineering that some, one of these houses is going to have a drive-through window on it. An open house will be held to provide information about the project, discuss the answers, questions, and gather feedback. We want the best project we can, for sure, through there, so we desire your feedback. So please attend that, and other than that, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you very much, and at this point, it's citizen comments. Anyone who'd like to come forward and address counsel on any subject, please do so. Same thing as before, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. Seeing none, I do want to, I'll close that part of it. I do want to thank staff for hanging out for the almost three and a half hours of this meeting. We appreciate your time. I know it's been a long day for you guys, so Chuck, do you have anything?
Move to adjourn, Your Honor.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No, I wouldn't think so. We are adjourned.